Good evening and welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Would just take, uh, if everyone, please take a moment and silence their cell phones. I'd like to start by introducing members of the board, of the general public, and people watching out in FCTV land. Starting at my far right, the audience's left, is Jerry Potamus.
Don't forget to do your watch. Took me a half hour today, if you could.
He's an associate member. Moving towards the audience's right is Frank Duffy, who is a full voting member. Next is Mark Fineran, who is also a full voting member. My name is James Morse. I'm a full voting member and currently serving as the chair. Next is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full voting member and our, normally our clerk. She will be taking a, uh, the night off from that duty. And Scott Peterson is the associate chair, and he will be serving as our temporary clerk this evening.
It's gonna be rough.
The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state's zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in approving and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from applicants, the public, and to allow a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read a public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making any derogatory or personal statements, and can include an opinion in favor or opposition to a project or to ask a specific question about a project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interests of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak are asked to wait to be recognized by the chair. To come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is necessary for the benefit of viewers of FCTV. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information is presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. Once a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board then will then discuss the project amongst themselves, make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a super majority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances. A split vote of three to two is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any zoning board of appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17. First up on this evening's agenda, we have public comment. This public comment is for anything that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Is any member of the public wish to make any public comments about anything not currently on the agenda this evening? We'll take one item out of order this evening, just a board announcement. The board of appeals would like to remind you that there is still a open associate member position on the board. Any person wishing to apply or his interest is encouraged to pull an application to the selectman's office, submit necessary paperwork. We would love to have a full board again. First up this evening, under continuations, we have hearing 003-23, Old Dock Road Condominium Association, 606 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, which is an appeal of the building commissioner's determination not to take zoning action.
Okay. To Jim's point, this is a filed appeal with a Falmouth town clerk pursuant to Mass. General Law's 48, 815, 240, 12.4 AIB of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner's determination. The subject property is 606 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have a note here from Jonathan Dickinson, the Assistant Zoning Compliance Agent. With documentation provided, the use of the right-of-way does not appear to protect the cognizant legal right of the surrounding landowners, nor have a clear purpose which compliance serves. This is not enforceable for the town. There's several letters of opposition and support, and I believe that's it.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry. Which I just read from...
There's several letters of opposition and support.
No, from the assistant town planner.
With the documentation provided, the use of the right-of-way does not appear to protect cognizant legal right of the surrounding landowners, nor have a clear purpose which compliance serves. This is not enforceable for the town.
Okay.
What was also in the file is there was a request for zoning enforcement from the Old Dock Road Condominium Association. The two issues that were specifically raised in the request for zoning enforcement were enforcement of Condition Number Six of Special Permit 5405 concerning the use of a 20-foot right-of-way by residents and visitors of six...
606.
606. Couldn't, for some reason, it looked like 666. 606 West Falmouth Highway, as well as the failure to maintain screening along the former right-of-way. Those are the two issues that, and then there was, excuse me, that was, complaint was received on December 6, 2022 by the zoning enforcement officer. A response was filed on 12/23/22 indicating that no action would be taken by the zoning enforcement officer, which is now the basis of this appeal. So the two issues that are before the board this evening are concerned Condition Number Six of hearing of Special Permit 5405 and screening that are alongside the right-of-way on the backside. Those are the two issues that I've just asked the board to keep their questions, as well as any public comments from the audience, too. That's what's properly before the board. We are not the Superior Court or the land court. There were numerous filings by a lot of the butters, as well as interested parties, addressing a lot of issues that have come up, but those are the two issues that are properly before the board. Is there someone here from the Old Dock Road Condominium Trust that wishes to make a presentation?
Yes, I'm the treasurer and...
Good evening. Would you just come up to the microphone, identify yourself?
I've got a request that two people speak before I do tonight.
Can you step up to the microphone and identify yourself, sir? Thank you.
Stephen Ladd. I'm a unit holder and also a trustee in the form of a treasurer. I'm gonna have two people speak before me tonight, and then my comments will follow them. The first will be Julie Kellner. She's a unit holder and also a direct abutter on the right-of-way. She'll be speaking about special permit issues tonight. Following her will be Paul Sellers, a longtime abutter to the right-of-way, and he'll be speaking on fencing issues and screening issues, and then I'll follow up after the two of them.
Thank you.
While we get the presentation up, you're getting some handouts. There's the power, a copy of the PowerPoint, so that you have it. I don't know if all of you have the...
Would you just state your name and address for the record? Thank you very much.
Sorry. Julie Kellner, I'm from 4 Old Dock Road, Unit 1B.
Thank you.
So, the handouts are the PowerPoint.
In a moment, sure.
There's a copy of the building commissioner's response to us, in case you didn't have a printed version. The Assistant Zoning Compliance Agent response, which you just read. Thank you, Chair. Administrative Approval 2009, which mentions 5405, because I'm not sure how much of the 5405 record, I think they're giving the record, but 01618, which is also mentioning 5405 record, all filed in Barnstable County. A page from the Old Dock Road Master Deed, Exhibit A, also filed with the county, and something we have in our presentation, a bigger figure of that, which is the Mass. dot impacts. We're, so, we're... I would like just to speak up that this is the amount of, not including what I've turned in, the amount of abutter letters that have come in regarding this case in 2000 and 2003. The majority of them have been against, have been in support of what 4 Old Dock Road is asking today, and the only letters that have come in that were not in support of what Old Dock, 4 Old Dock Road is asking is one letter, that's a personalized letter. Most of the letters that came in in 2000, those were all in 2000. There has not been a single letter of support, sorry, there has not been a single letter that has come in for the 2023 case that has been in support of 606 West Falmouth. So there were a few that came in in 2000. There have been none, except for the lawyer's letter and one of the residents that lived there. All of the abutters' letters that have come into you in 2023 are in support of 606, in support of 4 Old Dock Road, and those in 2000, almost all of them were from the petitioners at the time. You have copies of those in your record. There's one direct abutter that is not a petitioner of that, that submitted a personalized letter. So, I'd just like to note that there's a long file on this from not just our property, but all of the abutters. Okay. I know that last week you guys talked a lot about easements, and we actually don't plan to be talking a lot about easements and things that are land court issues today, and we agree with you on that. The reason why you got a 27-page handout, which includes responses to what came in, is because what we had been given in response from, that were filed with the town from the property of 606 West Falmouth Highway, brought up a lot of the issues, as well as if you refer to the building commissioner's letter to us that refers to that. So the reason why you have a larger file, and we're well aware now a little bit, we could use the education here, please, but we know that this is not going to be an easement discussion. We are asking for 5405 to be enforced. The conditions. I'd like to say that the fencing conditions, as I'll show in the presentation, are part of 5405. They're also part of other ZBA conditions, other ZBA special permits relating to this issue. It's been longstanding, so I'll go over that. We received today the letter from Troy Wall and Associates regarding the scope of what the ZBA does. I'd like to say that the case and the citations that you're all aware of, Wyman and Zoning, do say that the ZBA is the board to go to if we are not content with the, and want to appeal what the building commissioner said to us. And there's other laws that cite Wyman and Zoning that say it's in the public's interest to have the town able to enforce its zoning bylaws, and special permits get absorbed into that. I think you're all aware of this, so I don't need to go into that in detail. But, okay, so I'm gonna go through the presentation here. I gave you some of the copies because we're not sure exactly what of the 5405 record you have in full. Okay. Just really briefly, I don't plan to spend much time on anything regarding the easement issue, but they are in the slides for you, and if you'd like to circle back, we're happy to talk about them. So I want to make that clear. Okay. So, as the title says here, the ZBA special permits, 3979, 5405, and 01618, and all the associated documents with it, require that there's a physical barrier across the entirety of the row owned by 606 West Falmouth. It's our understanding that this was, is enforceable and has been enforceable in the past by the town, and the next speaker will mention that. Okay. Just because it was brought in by the abutters mentioning this, and as well as the building commissioner, 3979 is very specific on what conditions were changed with access to the entire row, including the part that we own and the part that the neighbors own. All right. There's language in there that's very clear that I won't go into, but encourage you to look at, but it specifically says the recorded right-of-way will be modified. And what's really important is this is actually an R deed for our property. It's recorded with Barnstable, and it's in our Exhibit A for the property. All right. There's a letter on this, so you're welcome to really look into what we submitted, but it's, the recorded right-of-way will be modified. The right-of-way in its entirety, it uses the word personally, shall not be used by tenants and customers at any time, and also it's only granted for the present owner's life of use. All right. Let's move on to what we're here for, though, regarding 3979. It requires that there's a fence installed for all but four months of the year, because at the time, as I said, there was some personal access to specifically Mr. Hendel and Mr. O'Connor. So, the row at that time was able to be accessed from a very short period of time in the winter, only by those two people, and a fence was supposed to be up the rest of the time, and do not enter signs were supposed to be erected both from the edge of Old Dock Road that intersects the row, all the way through to the edge of the property that intersects our two. So that's part of 3979. As I mentioned, 3979 is recorded. When something's recorded, I really helped and looked at the ZBA information last night. It takes three steps to record something with Barnstable. You first come, four, you come to the board, you know, you talk about the decision, right? Then you have to wait 20 days. Then you have to go pick up paperwork. Then you have to go take it up to Barnstable. Then you have to come back to town and confirm with the town that it's actually been done at Barnstable. So we're not talking about something that's optional, that a board, like, decides, right? You come as someone who is asking the board to develop your land, and you have discussions about what they, what you can and can't do. But it is the developer and the owner who agree to those conditions, and they have to take a lot of action to go and file it. So this idea that the board made, made a condition that wasn't agreed upon, including the fencing, by the owner at the time, the owners in 1979 and the owner in 19, in 2005, is, it takes that amount of effort. It was the owner who agreed to these changes, including the fencing. All right. As I said, 3979's an R deed. It's been in our deed since 1979 in December. It's been in every single condition afterwards. All right. So, um, am I missing? Okay. Am I miss, uh, here we go. All right. Why we're here today. The special permit 5405 further extinguished the easement. It was a personal easement at that time. If you read the language, shall not be used by residents, visitors of 606 West Falmouth Highway. Again, Mr. Hendel was the only owner at the time. The public hearing, a lot of the documentation that's filed with Barnstable regarding that, all units, all residents will use the driveway off 28A. There's letters in 2005, 2007, 2008, 2009, landscaping plans, all of these document the intent, which is no access, and further, as you'll hear from Paul next, the fencing, right, and the screening. So he'll go into detail about what all of those were, but, okay. So 2005, before 5405 was approved, the ZBA heard in the record, again, right-of-way access to the rear of the subject property shall not be used by the condo owner's tenants or their quests at any time. There's nothing that says some type of use. It's, it's no type of use. It's been clear since 1979 that these have been limited and really limited, starting in 2005. Okay. So, the ZBA, 5405, it requires screening at the right-of-way. It says this in the actual conditions. It says first, a revised plan showing the screening at right-of-way shall be submitted to the board. Paul will mention that plan that you'll have in front of you. It was in the record, though. There is a public hearing where a ment said screening of private bushes would be done at the right-of-way. That's in the documentation that you have with 5405. The June 2005 letter says restrict access to the right-of-way by condominium association members by providing the necessary landscaping material to provide adequate screening. That's in the June 2005 letter from the Captain Hamlin House developers, who became the owners right after. March 2007, letter from the developers to the ZBA. To obtain an occupancy permit says the same thing. Landscaping plan may not be complete, but to prevent any use of right-of-way by the residents of 606 West Falmouth Way, had put in temporary screening until the permanent. They filed revised landscape plans as required by the ZBA on September 15, 2008, and you'll get those maps in just a minute when Paul takes over, so we can talk about those in detail. So, further, it's important to note that both 606 West Falmouth Highway and 4 Old Dock Road came into effect as condos after 3979 and 5405. So all of us are subject to those conditions that are on the record with Barnstable, including the fencing. What I think is really important is that the Captain Hamlin House condo master deed and their unit deeds by thereof and their declaration of trust have lots of references to all rights, easements, records, reservations, conditions, and restrictions of record. They are supposed to abide by those. I provided that on the slide. I'm not gonna read them, but this is not a case where it's not very clear, and it also says all government bodies, including municipalities, and record, and anything on the restrictions of record. So there really shouldn't be a lot of debate. Okay. I don't know if you had the document, so we provided a copy of it in 2009, which was an administrative approval that also, again, mentioned the right-of-way and the conditions of holding up 5405. So, 2000, before 2005, in 2005, 2007, 2009, you get the point. It's on and on that 5405 intentionally by the ZBA or the town representatives who are enforcing ZBA, special... enforcing ZBA special permits reiterated over and over again that 5405 was to be abided by and enforced. All right. Now, let's go to who the current owners are. It's the condominium association. They signed their own agreement to the fencing in 2018 in front of you. Right. So this is 01618, I believe that I gave, we gave you copies of those. It's signed by the, it was, it was registered by Captain Hamlin House. The current owners were recorded with the registry of deeds. I don't think, because I was giving you a clean copy, if you need the number that it's filed, I have, I have that available. I'm not sure it's at the top. Yeah. It's book 31384265.
One moment, please, ma'am.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
I'm almost-
Fifteen minutes is up. Does the board wish to extend additional time? And if so, how much longer?
I'm almost done with mine, and then Paul will go about the fencing.
May I inquire how much time any other presenter is going to require from?
Ten minutes.
Total?
Yes.
Request for 13 additional minutes. What's the board's, like, how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve the additional 13 minutes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay. So 01618, "All the cedars shall be maintained in good health along the right-of-way." All right. I'm not going to go into wells and housing appeals here, because that's in the document we provided. That's in response to what letters we had. The same thing with the discussion about whether we need to talk about persons' agri. That's really not an issue in this case. All right. Safety on the row. This, you have a large copy of. This is from MassDOT data. This area is a safety concern for MassDOT. They've been out to talk about it. The number of crashes in the area are just as high as where 28 intersects Brick Hill Road, Thomas Landers Way, and Massachusetts 28A. I'm not going to read them to you, but we're well aware that safety of the public and safety of the neighborhood is mentioned in the zoning bylaws. And also regarding the screening and landscaping, it's related to bylaws for service areas, and this does block a service area. And that was part of the ruling as well. So I'm going to end there and turn this over, so we can talk about what we're here for, which is the screening. Thank you for your time and your patience with this.
One moment, please. Do you have a question?
Um, there's a condition, number six in 5405, says that, you know, no one will use that right-of-way. Is there a separate document signed by anybody on behalf of 606 West Falmouth Highway where they relinquish this right-of-way, and is that separate document recorded in the registry of deeds?
The document actually doesn't need to be filed, because 3979 had already changed the-
I don't, I don't want to know whether it has to be filed or not. Is there a document?
No. No, 5405 is filed. But the point is that 3979 was already enforced and filed and in deeds. So that is what you're working off of in the next step. On top of that, 5405, the only owner at the time was Bill Hendel at, in 2005, and he's the one who filed that with the Barnstable County.
So the answer's no.
The answer's no, but the answer, as I said, is conditioned on the fact that 3979 was already enforced then. So it doesn't erase, 5405 does not erase 3979.
So the answer's still no.
Mr. Tamus.
Either are you aware of the condition that requires enforcement to be taken within 10 years from the date of issuance of the permit, if there was such a violation? So when was the last time you requested enforcement of-
We're going to get to that right now.
-the most relevant permit?
Sure. I can cover that for you.
Thank you.
01618.
Paul Sellers-
I stopped the clock. Go right ahead now.
Paul Sellers, 16 Old Dock Road. Just to kind of continue our overview of the right-of-way issues, and I will try and go through this quickly. So again, the right-of-way issues were long established. Right-of-way began 1956. 1979, the orders started coming in based on the request to change the property's zoning to allow for additional apartments and guest rooms, business use. At that point, that was the first restriction on the right-of-way that Mr. Hendel gave up his use for a portion of the right-of-way. Done in 2005, the order conditions, again, when the right-of-way use was relinquished in the 2005 order conditions. The three issues that were big items for us were the screening of the right-of-way to inhibit people from accessing the right-of-way, the trash issue, the dumpsters, because the property had been exploited to nine units. They made no accommodations for any sort of storage, and no sort of accommodations for trash. That's why they were mandated to use a private dumpster service. And then again, the right-of-way being detailed that no one shall use it but the residents of the right-of-way, and that the residents of the Hamlin House and their visitors were restricted from it. Multiple hearings through that 2005 period, numerous objections from the abutters and the neighbors, as Julie pointed out, a lot on the safety issues. The number of units were a big factor. They were actually looking for more than nine at one point to go on those two buildings. The visual impacts from the expanded parking, the additional cars, the visual, the, excuse me, the nuisance factor with the number of people that would be exponentially increased because of the increase in units. I mentioned the trash, and of course, again, the driveway was one of the big driving forces, ensuring that that 20-foot right-of-way was not overloaded with additional use. So we had an extremely strong collaborative effort with the building group, the, the Hamlin House LLC, the primary owner, Mr. Bill Hendel, and a bunch of the media abutters. We worked through those issues. We came to a number of agreements, and those agreements, again, were regarding the screening of the right-of-way to inhibit people from accessing the right-of-way from 606. People from 606 not using the right-of-way for any use whatsoever. And of course, again, the trash issue. 2013, some of the violations started. There was a path that was created through the screening at that point, and again, violations for people using the driveway. The ZBA addressed that and required the condo to restore that screening, and again, remind people that they were not allowed to use the right-of-way. 2018, the building department received a complaint about an unpermitted shed. The Hamlin House did go back and get the proper permits for that. There was violations for the removal of the dumpster at that time. They were told to put the dumpster back, and the concerns for the screening and the driveway access, again, were expressed at that time. In 2020, there was some filings to come before the board, and at that point, again, notifications for violation of the driveway were sent, violations for creating the path through the screening were mentioned, and again, the degradation, degradation of the screening, plant screening. All of this was argued that it was just going to be quicker and more convenient for members of the Hamlin House to exploit the driveway, the right-of-way, rather than go the designated area that they had down 28A. All of this to essentially save about 33 steps by cutting through the screening and causing more degradation. So there's your crosswalks, your sidewalks, ample room, ample access. This is the sidewalk in front of the Hamlin House, the crosswalk at Old Dock, and the sidewalk heading down to the harbor. So plenty of access for them to use, as it was originally intended in 2005 hearings. This is a view on the left, the very end of the driveway where I live. You can see how tight that is with that 20-foot gravel driveway going into the tarred area. You can see in the middle picture here, if anyone is in that, is in the driveway parked askew, it inhibits any sort of passage. And the third one is just exiting onto Old Dock Road. You can see how difficult that can be. You start adding more and more people from the Hamlin House, and we start to get into some, some issues. So again, the lower left-hand picture, access coming out of the driveway, and then the other limiting factor is the snow access in the wintertime. Again, very, very tight, and it just makes it harder when you're driving down the driveway expecting somebody to jump out of the shrubbery. That could be an issue. A couple of examples of the violations that have been ongoing, kayaks being gone down, dragged through the screening. And you can see in the background, a car that had just, you know, been in before that, again, how tight that restriction it is through that area. Hence the reason why we advocated for the very strong protections back in 2005. In 2020, a new access path was cut, and that was done by manipulating this rhododendron by the fence line at the 6 Old Dock Road condominiums. And I also have a picture here of the remnants of the 1979 wire fence that was required to be, that's a post that the wire fence was on. Again, another shot, just some of the shrubbery degradation from a couple of years ago. This was an issue with people dragging kayaks and bikes through the shrubs. This is a kind of a better picture of the rhododendron that was manipulated to create this pathway in between the old Dock Road condos and the Hamlin House. You can see where some of the regrowth has taken place from where it was cut back heavily. My aerial views, these were not taken from a Chinese spy balloon, just in case anybody's asking, but the, the first picture, you can see really the form and shape of that rhododendron as it originally was, and you can kind of see the clear, more delineated path area that was cut through. So the newly created path creates a dangerous blind spot for us entering off of Old Dock Road with that fence there, the private hedge, and the screenery that still is in place, manipulating that rhododendron and creating this illegal access onto the right-of-way. That's the major safety problem that we have, and that's a major access point that's now being exploited in that area. So as an abutting property owner, we'd ask that you uphold the 40-plus years of protections that you've given us in the 1979 and 2000 order of conditions. We ask that you have the Hamlin condominiums repair the breach in the right-of-way, planting screen. Ask that that's be done by June 1st. We also ask that you consider the installation of the wire fence that was outlined in 1979's order with the do-not-enter signs attached. We think that should be able to easily be completed by June 1st as well. And if those are unacceptable, or they seem to be impossible to fulfill, we'd ask that the board consider having the Hamlin House install an alternative wood stockade fence, one that would match the Old Dock Road condominiums. And the, of course, the only other alternative for us would be to ask you to consider if these conditions aren't met, or conditions aren't enforced, you do still have the ability to use the fining process. $300 a day for each violation. Each day represents a violation. So in an extreme case, we'd ask you also consider that. And I guess Steve, are you up?
I'm a unit owner, and I'm also the treasurer and trustee, and I'm here to provide you for the, to provide for the zoning board of appeals these statements and concerns and requests from the Old Dock Road Condo Association. Half of the association unit owners abut the right-of-way. You'll see that on those pictures I just gave you, Unit A and Unit B. There were three units in those two buildings that directly abut that right-of-way. During the purchasing process, the prospective buyers were guided around the property by Stephen Hadad, that I see sitting in the back row back there. He was the, the owner of the development, who detailed the location and the importance of the development, who detailed the location and importance of the right-of-way being purchased as part of our units. This knowledge was a major consideration in the purchasing decision. The two zoning board of appeals special permits mentioned here tonight are part of a written record and are recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Because no current easement is held by 606 West Falmouth Highway, any access onto the right-of-way owned by 4 Old Dock Road Highway is trespassing. Trespassing is an infringement of a legal right and a property right. Both the master deed and declaration of trust for the Captain Hamlin House condominiums and the Old Dock Road Condominium Association are restricted by the rules and regulations of all government bodies and agencies, including the municipality. Privacy is a cherished commodity-
One moment, sir.
I've got two-
What time do we need?
Two minutes. I told you I'd speak for three. I've just spoken for about three quarters.
Make, make a motion to let him finish for two minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
All papers, please, say aye. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Privacy is a cherished commodity that all too often today is becoming more difficult to maintain. A home and its surroundings is one place privacy is expected to be found. So when violations of privacy interrupt one's private space, it should not come as a surprise and individual would try to prevent that invasion. Oh, how unneighborly and inconsiderate that a homeowner would want to limit noise and traffic across their private property. Driveway access onto our right-of-way was limited to just one of our units, with safety being the overriding concern. When backing out of this unit's steep driveway, which you'll see is Building A there, the rearview image from the car's mirrors focuses well above the street level. The grade is also steep enough that it requires more acceleration. An absence of sidewalks and sidewalks draws any small foot traffic into the middle of the row where the car is backing to occupy. Both zoning board of appeals special permits contain specific language to install and maintain a fence or screen to prevent access to the right-of-way owned by 606 West Falmouth Highway. The preventative landscape screening barrier issue unfortunately has a chronic history of failure. Skipping many examples and site visits from the town's building inspector's office, this current appeal of 2023 encompasses years of screening barrier abuse. Plants have died, plants have been trampled, and in one case, plants have been cut back, you'll see that in C and B, to open a four-foot wide pathway right next to the Old Dock Road Condo Association's seven-foot fence, where the barrier is supposed to join. For screening to be an effective preventive barrier, plants must have a beginning height of four to five feet, just like the material detailed in the zoning board of appeals landscape plan, received and recorded on September 15th of 2008. A distance apart of two to four feet, coupled with a triangular planting pattern, would create the necessary barrier width of three to five feet. Carolina rose, with its tall bushy growth of pink and purple flowers, would be a perfect choice of a native and hardy plant. Old Dock Road Condo Association has a five-foot private hedge along the right-of-way that joins their fence, and this plant barrier would also be an excellent choice. We ask that the zoning board of appeals reaffirm to 606 West Falmouth Highway that they are to respect all of the screening barrier conditions agreed to in both special permits. Old Dock Road has supported the use of attractive plant material to create a fencing screening barrier for the benefit of all. However, our patience is being tested, and continued disregard will only result in our insistence of a permanent, all-wood, seven-foot-high cedar fence with no openings or gates that- that exactly matches our existing fence currently separating the two properties. This would be paid for entirely by 606 West Falmouth Highway. In conclusion, in his 1914 poem, Mending Wall, Robert Frost coined the phrase, "Good fences make good neighbors." While the meaning in the poem might have been slightly more about turf protection, it can also be applied to adding value to a home and property. Thank you.
Board have any questions? No questions. Just no. Public comment?
We've got to hear the other side.
Call this ball. You're next, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, and I represent the Captain Hamblin House, which is the subject of this request for enforcement. I'd like to just start briefly by saying that my client completely disagrees with the premise of the request for enforcement, that these conditions were intended to stop all use of the way. We don't think that's what happened here, and we don't think that's what the conditions currently say. The first condition came into effect in 1979, and at that particular time, the property owner was applying for a special permit to turn the barn at the rear of the property into an antique business. And as part of the, a permit that allowed that to happen, there was a condition attached that said, and I quote, "The right-of-way to the rear of the property will not be used in conjunction with the business use of the barn." That's, that's where the genesis of this whole thing happened. Later, in 2005, the property owner discontinued the business use of the barn and sought to turn the barn into residential use so that the property would become multifamily. Because the commercial use went away, it's, it's somewhat curious or interesting to me why the condition itself didn't go away. But it didn't. It stayed. But the language changed. And it says now, "20-foot right-of-way owned by the subject property owner shall not be used by resident visitors of 606 West Falmouth Highway." It's our contention that to the extent that the condition applies, it applies to the subject property, which is 606 West Falmouth. All of the properties on the right-of-way have an easement to use that way, including 606. And while the zoning board can condition use of property, they can't alter or modify property rights such as easements. And my client has an easement to use the road. And so all these allegations of trespass are just honestly misplaced. Having said that, I'd like to focus specifically on what's before the board. And I would go back to how the chair started, started the hearing. This is a request for enforcement. Requests for enforcement are very specific in how they're handled. The building commissioner gets first blush at all requests. So they have to start with the building commissioner. Then once the building commissioner makes a determination, it comes before this board. And the issues are limited to those that were raised before the building commissioner and those that are set forth in their request for appeal. We've heard all kinds of things about easements and screening and stuff like that. There were two requests for enforcement. The first says that members of Captain Hamblin continue to access their portion of the right-of-way in violation of Section 6 of Special Permit 5405. And as I've just contended, there's nothing in the condition that says that the members can't continue to access the portion of the right-of-way that is affecting Old Dock Road. That was not part of the permit application itself. The building commissioner got that right, and I would suggest that the board should not disturb that decision. And the second request for enforcement is that the screening is not being maintained. And we heard all kinds of argument about the screening was intended to stop use of the right-of-way. But again, that's not what the special permit says. If you look at the language of the special permit, it is in condition number two. And it says, "A revised plan showing the screening at right-of-way and property line abutting 594 West Falmouth Highway and revised parking plan, adding two additional parking spaces, shall be submitted to the board prior to issuance of the building permit." It doesn't say that the screening was to stop all access to the right-of-way. It's simply a condition that the board imposes on many commercial activities where there has to be some screening put in place. There is screening in place and is properly maintained. What this is really about is, it's about an attempt by the owners of the Old Dock Road Condominium Association trying to stop people from using their property rights to walk up and down the right-of-way, essentially to get to the nearby bike path and to the nearby beach. And if they want to do that, if they want to contest property rights, they need to go to the land court or the superior court. They shouldn't be coming to this board, asking this board to stop alleged trespassing, which is not trespassing at all. So for those reasons, we would respectfully ask you to affirm the building commissioner's decision. Thank you. That's my presentation. If I have any questions.
Any questions?
Could I just, one question? So it's your theory that the screening was just that visual screening and was not intended for trespassing?
That, that is correct, because especially if you look at the condition, it talks about dumpsters and parking spaces, and the screening was required in, in connection with all of that. So obviously, the owner was starting to use part of that property near the right-of-way, and the board imposed some screening conditions to screen the view of that use.
Thank you.
Is there anything there that allows the residents of 606 to trim the screening, maintain it, cut it in any form or fashion?
Well, I, I think it's their screening that's on their property. So, and, and I think the condition requires that it be maintained. So I, I would say yes.
Maintained as in standing or maintained as in someone cutting a way through?
Well, maintained to be screening in accordance with the plan. And I would, and one other point is that the burden is on the applicant here to, to persuade you to overturn the building commissioner. I didn't see that plan submitted. And as Mr. Duffy pointed out, I didn't see any document that was recorded relinquishing easement rights. They, they have this argument that the permits are recorded, but those don't cause easement rights to be relinquished.
But our conditions that we apply are meant to be...
Agreed. And I, and I think they are being complied with. I, I think that they are being complied. You saw photos, there is screening there.
I disagree. Frank, did you have a question?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Wall a question, but he answered it. I guess he must have had some kind of idea of what I was going to ask him.
Anything else?
No.
I, I guess when you, when you talk about screening, when you're on the way looking at 606, the material that's there today basically doesn't do anything optically. You can, you can say it's not fully butted at this point, but I, I just don't understand if there's supposed to be some sort of a visual screen. What's there currently just doesn't seem, from my perspective, to make sense.
My response to that would be that the burden of proof in this particular matter is upon the complaining party. And they, in my opinion, need to show the board what was required. They haven't provided you any information about that, and they haven't provided any information that the condition is not being complied with.
Okay. And, and again, I mean, I guess we can argue the point, but I, I continue to see, "Shall not be used by the tenants or customers at any time." That came from May 7th, 1979. So I guess I struggle. It's unfortunate, again, that we're, that we're hearing these cases where you wish this could be all worked out between the folks that are on the way and 606. And it, to me, it just potentially goes down a path of litigation. But from my reading of it, it doesn't look like they should be allowed. 606 should not be allowed to use the way. But that's just my opinion on the reading.
My response to that, our, our position is, beginning with the concept that all property owners along that right-of-way have an easement to use the right-of-way. And that, that's in my letter, and I provided the plans and the deeds. Then you look at the condition in permit 5405, and what it says is, "20-foot right-of-way owned by the subject property owner shall not be used." So the part of the right-of-way that is owned by the permit holder is the dirt under the way that's within his property boundaries, and then he has a right to use the other part. So my contention is, is that this condition applies to the right-of-way to the extent it's on 606. It does not apply to the rest of the right-of-way.
Thank you. No further questions. Other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back to you, sir.
My name is Stephen Haddad, for the record, and I'm the one who actually built 4 Old Dock Road condominiums. I wasn't asked to come here tonight by anybody specifically. I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm trying to be very, very brief. If we have to resort to the written word, then these people have lost their way sometime between the condos being developed, the apartments being developed, use of the way and not use of the way. The spirit of the agreement, and I'm probably the only one in the room who recognizes this, because I spoke with Bill Hendel many a times when I was developing 4 Old Dock. In fact, we met at that precise corner. Bill had purchased this beautiful fence, because fences do make good neighbors. And I was tearing the fence down, and this board required me to have a fence along the southern property. Bill was insistent that I should never, nor should any of my customers, contractors, enter onto his property. And the reason that he didn't want that was because he was in the middle of trying to, one, he was living there, but two, he was trying to sell them. So this board required, as they do in most cases, nobody likes a wooden fence, nobody likes a cast iron, or a wire fence, everybody wants natural screening. So to suggest that natural screening was put up, not meant as a barrier for trespassing, is just false, because it, the natural screening was meant for a barrier for trespassing, not only for foot traffic, but for vehicles. I can tell you, as I am standing here tonight, Bill Hendel specifically told me that he does not want his customers, his tenants, to walk on my property, which at the time was the I'dill Spa Motel. And he was specific about me not wanting to walk on their property, nor my contractors. If you think about it, it's creepy. A lot of these people in the audience have bedrooms along that right-of-way. It's creepy to peer into the room. A lot of these people have driveways that back up into the way. God forbid that this board decided to allow the use of the right-of-way and someone gets run over. You get little kids. I was reading the file, because I wanted to be well-versed. I read the file, I saw where one of the, one of the people that wrote a letter, he purposely walks up 28A, down the sidewalk, cuts across the crosswalk to West Falmouth Highway. It's safer. We're talking 100 feet, 100 feet, if that. The spirit of the agreement, the spirit of the right-of-way and the privacy was, 4 Old Dock Road, half the people at 4 Old Dock Road don't even use the right-of-way. It's really just for Julie and the, who has the, on the corner, the McLean's who live right there, the, the Twitchells who live across the way, they wouldn't cut the McLean's. Yeah, I had to go onto that right-of-way. It was meant for the privacy. Please view it that way. And I would ask that you would support the rebuilding, and if it has to be a fence, put a fence up. Because people can see a fence coming down. They can't see someone clipping, clipping, clipping a natural vegetation. So if it requires a fence, put a fence up. But I can tell you, that's not what Bill and I had discussed, nor was it his intention for people to cut through there in either direction. So thank you very much for listening.
Other public comment?
My name is Julie Malloy. I happen to be one of the owners at 606 West Falmouth Highway. I actually have brought with me copies of the March 27, 1979, Falmouth Enterprise article about the zoning board of appeals in this hearing. In 1979, I think if you'll review that, you'll see the concern then was vehicular traffic on the right-of-way. And in particular, I think it was commercial, the commercial vehicular traffic on that right-of-way that the neighbors were complained about, complaining about, and they're cited in that article. And an overriding point that I think has gotten somewhat lost here is the right-of-way, to the extent that it is behind 606 West Falmouth Highway, is owned by West Falmouth Highway. We own that land. Bill Hendel owned that land. And if, I think if you read that article and the comments that were made at that point in time about concerns about vehicular traffic, and what becomes clear is, there was a concern, and if you read the decision, there was a concern about who could use the right-of-way during certain periods of the year. They didn't, there was, there was no requirement that Mr. Hendel not use it all of the year. He was still allowed to use it a portion of the year. And specifically, it talks about tenants and customers. Well, your, your customers certainly are probably coming to your business in a car. They're not, most of them probably aren't walking. Well, maybe if you have a very, very local or very, very small business. But the point of it was to limit the vehicular traffic. I don't think this board today, or back then, would have wanted to, or could have, even if they had wanted to, prohibit a property owner from entirely accessing a portion of their property that is a right-of-way that they own, they pay taxes on, as we do now, for all purposes whatsoever. And I don't think there would have been any safety benefit to anybody. The concern was an overburdening of the easement by vehicles at that point in time. There is no allegation now, and wasn't when there was complaint made to the building inspector, about people who own 606 West Falmouth Highway using the right-of-way with vehicles, or motor vehicles. It's, they're complaining about pedestrians and bicycles. It has been pointed out that, yes, we do have a driveway that fronts on Route 28A, which is a, in the summer, a busy and dangerous highway. It's obviously safer for pedestrians to access, to go through a private right-of-way than it, and down that private right-of-way down to Old Dock Road than it would be 428A. So I think you have to distinguish between the vehicle use, the pedestrian use, and people on bicycles are obviously not motor vehicles, so that's also a minimal use. To the extent that, that this board, even the neighbors would consider requiring us to fence off our property so we can't access the 20 feet that we own that is burdened by a right-of-way, it's a little bit ridiculous. I, I, I don't see how anyone could justify that. Now, does the fact that we occasionally walk down the right-of-way, does it interfere with the neighbor's ability to use the right-of-way? No. But I'm not even sure that this board's concern goes to that level. They had a legitimate concern at the time about vehicle use of the right-of-way, a private way-of-way, private right-of-way, excuse me. In addition to the fact that a lot of that use seemed to be commercial at the time, and now that's gone. But the, so fundamentally, as Brian pointed out, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, I haven't spoken in public in quite a while. The point and the object of this board's meeting tonight is, or considering this application, is to decide whether or not the building inspector made the right decision. The building inspector decided that whether or not what the, what the neighbors are complaining about rises to a level where he can enforce it. His decision was that he doesn't have the authority to enforce it, that none of the decisions of the board give any authority to enforce it. Essentially, they're asking you to tell people not to trespass on the portion of the right-of-way that is owned by 4 Old Dock Road. That's not, I mean, that's the purview of the police department, it's not the purview of the board of appeals. There's no allegation that cars owned by people who, who live at and own at 606 West Falmouth Highway have been using the right-of-way. There is screening there. To argue that screening or fencing has to be put up so that we can never use our 20-foot feet of property behind us simply because it's burdened by a right-of-way would amount to a taking. And I, I just can't imagine that the board would want to do that. It wouldn't be lawful. There's a whole statute devoted to how you take property, and you have to take it for a public purpose. There wouldn't be any public purpose, since the only people who would benefit would be the other property owners on the private right-of-way. So I, I'd suggest to you that all of this is misplaced. It's certainly not neighborly. I've walked my bicycle down it once, got yelled at by a woman who... I've walked my bicycle down it once, got yelled at by a woman who lived-
If you could summarize your comments, I've been very generous with the time. It's generally two minutes.
Yeah, who lived across, yeah, who lived across the way, who didn't even live on the public way, on the, on the right-of-way, excuse me. She lives on the public portion of Old Dock Road, has, across the street, no interest in the right-of-way at all. So I, I would argue that you should uphold the building inspector's decision and dismiss the neighbor's appeal. Thank you.
Other public comments? Ma'am?
Linda Pogue, I'm an owner at 606 West Falmouth Highway. I just want to personalize and maybe humanize what we're doing in terms of who uses that right-of-way. There are nine units, there are only five that are there all year. Of those, not everybody even uses it. So what we're talking about is somebody like me, taking outside my parking lot and using the right-of-way to access quickly and easily, because I can, the bike path. Whether I can go around or not is really beside the point. There aren't many of us doing that. We're not driving. Most of us don't even do bicycles. I was the person who was schlepping a paddleboard. You won't see this 72-year-old doing much of that, and I don't go back and forth with the paddleboard. So I just want to humanize that, and in terms of this screening that we're talking about, I wish that our condo association had the kind of money to put in lots of beautiful shrubs and fences. We do not. And the bushes that are there seem to die. Whether they're for a purpose or not, I think also, as they've said before, our lawyer and Julie, is beside the point. Whether it's pretty, visual, is beside the point. For me, the point is, I want to go outside my back door, easily and safely, walk on the right-of-way that we're paying taxes for as well. I'm not peeking in anybody's windows. I just wanted you to understand that it's just people like me, this 72-year-old woman who lives alone, who's walking on this right-of-way to get to the bike path. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Deb Shearer, also a unit owner of Four, Four Old Dock Road. I wasn't going to say a thing tonight. I would prefer to be neighborly, but it's very clearly defined in 5405 that there shall be screening across the entire interface between 606 and the right-of-way. I don't know why we're talking about the easement here, the right to use the easement, that's not the question. The question is solely the screening. And I believe it says very clearly that the screening shall be maintained across the entire intersection. As far as I'm concerned, that's all you need to address. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I will be brief. Maury Harlowhawks, 9 Old Dock Road, the horrible lady that lives across the street 34 feet from the right-of-way. I've lived there my whole life, we've been there seven generations, and I have an advantage because I was at the 1979 discussion with Bill Handel, who was a dear friend. It was very clear then, he was a gentleman, he was a man of his word. He wanted to have an increase of use of his barn, which was a barn, and it turned into a commercial entity, and he was a really good guy, and we all sat down at the table, like the old days, and talked about it, and came up with an agreement. And my aunt lived across the street, on the right-of-way, Barbara Croft, and she had a small granddaughter, and she was very concerned about the traffic and the people. I'm sorry to say, it was not just about the cars. She was worried about transient people coming through, and she didn't want her granddaughter to be out in the yard and have people cutting through the right-of-way to, to have access to her property. So that was why it was very limited, and Mr. Handel and Mr. O'Connor were the only two people that could use it on a certain time of year, because she trusted them. And there was supposed to be a chain, two posts and a chain across it, and the only people that could go across were Bill Handel and Mr. O'Connor. So that's the history of 79, and there was never supposed to be use of pedestrians, bicycles, kayaks, or people, or cars. Then we jumped to 2005. Another gentleman agreement, Mr. Handel's still alive. We all sit down, we're at the table, we go over to Kinlan and Grover, which is across the street, to come up with a compromise, because now he wanted to get rid of the antique barn, and now he wanted to have an intensity of use and turn it into condos. Now we had the Oldenburgs, nobody lives there anymore, except for my cousin Donna Croft and myself, the only two abutters from 79 to now. And they were concerned, they had two young daughters, same concern. They didn't want transient people going through that property, they were afraid their two young daughters, if they were out playing in the yard, that there'd be people that were strangers, and they didn't want their children to be exposed, or they were afraid. So we agreed, all of us, including Mr. Handel, his developer, and the abutters, to, there were three conditions for him to get nine units on a residential lot. Three, not to use, and to have a dumpster, no use of the right-of-way, and the screening. That was it. That was all he had to do. He agreed, and I would like to remind the people that signed up and bought these condos, Mr. Handel never appealed any of the decisions this board made. He agreed to them, we all agreed to them, we all came to these hearings, and nobody protested because we all agreed, and he gave up those rights so that we would give him support to put in his very lovely condominium development. And I am really sad that it does come to this, because we are neighborly. This is our village, I've been here my whole life. And when neighbors, when you have investments in property and things get ugly, it's really sad. And I just think that a fence, at this point, I'm not a big fence person, but I'm a green, I'm a landscaper, I'm a green screen person, and I really think the green screen, that's why we all agreed, Mr. Handel liked the, the beauty of the, the green screen as well, that a very substantial green screen go up, the chain, the post and the chains that were from 79 go back up, because if they bring in kayaks today, will it be cars tomorrow? Because Mr. Handel had respect, and as Mr. Handel died in 2017, and it was like it ramped up for the disrespect of that right-of-way and the order of conditions that this body gave it. And I just would really hope that you support the Four Old Dock Road request and, and uphold what Mr. Handel had given to us as abutters. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Motion to close with discussion?
Please.
Get some discussion.
Whoops, sorry.
You've got to come up here and speak.
So I'm coming not on behalf of the trustees, but as a unit owner and a butter. Safety, as was raised, is a very big issue. Safety for the community is a very big issue. If you haven't been out to the area, I know that a walk down the row seems like it's safe, but you actually, there's no sidewalk on that side of the road. You have to jaywalk or jaybike across the street in order to get to a crosswalk. I often actually cut through my neighbor's yard to go up to a safer area in the summer when it is busy. So this idea of safety, for me to get out of my own parking space is very difficult, it's very steep, I actually can't get out of it without using, we own into the neighbor's driveway, but I have to use that part of it to, to be able to do that. That's how narrow this road is, and how steep for me that it is to get out of the driveway. I cannot see, and I'm happy to show window, pictures, but I don't think you need them. I can't see the row from my car when I'm parked in my garage. So it's a very big safety issue. I am very nervous. The neighbors across the way themselves have a lot of traffic. They like to park even into the row very regularly in the summer, across the edge of the driveway, because they have a large family. We are very neighborly about it. I tell them, if I'm going to be there, that I would appreciate they don't do it. We've reached a nice agreement, but it's already heavy use from just the numbers that are there, and for me to get out of my driveway and for me to be worrying about people on the row, and also people jaywalking across the row right there, it, it is stressful. And there's a lot of blind spots, if you haven't been out there. The neighbors, as I said, have a large family. They often park, they've had service trucks on their, on Old Dock Road, parked big service trucks, two days this week. There's a blind spot, you can't even get out of the row, as Paul said, either, without seeing. So it's blind for the people coming, because they can't see us, and it's blind for us trying to exit. It is a safety issue. It's not just a personal safety issue, it's a safety issue for the town, it's a safety issue for everyone using Old Dock Road. As we know, it goes up to Old Silver and all these other amazing places that we live at, but it means that there are a lot of people that come there that don't even know the neighborhood in the summer. West Falmouth Market stays in business for that reason, with, with, with the bike path being so close. But it's not just a personal issue for me, I'm worried. I'm genuinely worried about the safety that, that I have to worry about for everyone else when I'm leaving my property. It was a condition when, when her dad was negotiating with the board, that it was very limited to the only person that had to be able to be there. He doesn't even have doors on the other units, they don't have doors on the back of the row for that reason either. They're just windows in their fireplaces. It was a lot of discussion about all of the properties here to maintain that safety, and I just implore you, please, to consider the safety of everyone using Old Dock Road when you're thinking about this, because I know that's part of the bylaws.
Thank you.
Before we close, do we want to have some open discussion?
Certainly.
No, I just, I know you were ready to close.
I said, "close with discussion."
So then we can open it, okay.
Well, you don't have to open it.
Well, let's not close it till we've had some discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, I, it's unfortunate, again, I'll reiterate my earlier comments, that, that this couldn't have been solved, quite honestly, between the two abutters. My read of the document is that they shall not use the, the way. I don't, I think the quote-unquote "the screening" is inadequate. So I guess, I, I'm not quite sure why the commissioner couldn't have looked at the previous findings and conditions and supported the right-of-way folks to say that, you know, that this should have stopped, but I, I'm not the building commissioner, so I apologize for the rambling, but it's tough. Both sides bring, bring good arguments, but I, I just, again, I wish it would, after 18 years, I guess it's a bad marriage and things got to get worked out.
Agreed, I think this, the screening is trampled upon. I don't know, it was, it looked a mess. It's not doing screening, it's just, like, not kept up plants. But I think that the 5405 should stand in my mind.
It was described by one of the people here as a taking, and the reality is, nobody had the right to build nine units there, otherwise they wouldn't have come before this board in the first place. And we gave a conditional approval, and those conditions were listed, and they're not being abided by. It's quite evident from the pictures that people are trimming, cutting, and trampling. It's one of our conditions, and it should be abided by. I, I believe there's too much of this going on all over, and I, I believe it should be enforced. And you know, the ironic thing is here, that 80% of these people are using this cut-through to go recreate on the bike path or go use their kayak. Yet, they appear to be afraid of 30 or 50 extra steps, that just makes absolutely no sense to me. And I think you should all be good neighbors, but first off, you should have AR conditions. They were put there for a reason. If the use from 79 changed, and they thought that this didn't need to be, they could have extinguished it then, but it was kept on as a condition, I think for obvious reasons. You have many more houses on a lot than are, many more units on a lot than, than you're allowed. There was some give and take, and, and there appears to be a little more taking than was intended.
Right.
Well, this is a difficult case, and I would like to comment that we received a lot of material from the parties in the week or so coming up to this hearing. And then today, we received a whole bunch more, and there was a lot distributed here at the hearing tonight. So I have read everything that was submitted before today, and then at 4:00 today, I got a lot of material to read, some of which was this presentation, so I had the benefit of it here today. But in all fairness to everybody, I'd just like to say, I haven't had a chance to read everything that has come in, because a lot of it came in in the last 24 hours. But let's look at this for what it really is. This is an appeal from a decision of the building commissioner. He received a request for enforcement, and he is the proper party to enforce the zoning bylaw, and that includes special permits and the conditions therein. He gave a rather terse response, and he said he declined to, to, to take the enforcement action. And there was a, I think, a sub, a letter in the file from Mr. Dickerson, or Dickinson, who was the assistant zoning enforcement officer, saying that there was a lot of legal issues involving the right-of-way, and that was maybe the reason that the building commissioner declined to enforce at least that. But I see this as, as two issues. It's been the screening issue and the right-of-way issue. Now, the, the building commissioner has the authority to enforce the zoning bylaw, but he can only enforce what's in the zoning bylaw. And the condition in, in the zoning bylaw, there's, excuse me, there are conditions in the zoning bylaw that allow the Board of Appeals to set reasonable conditions on special permits, and that would include such things as screening and plantings and so forth to, to afford privacy and to exercise some control over the property. And I think the, the Board of Appeals frequently puts these conditions in special permits. So in my mind, the building commissioner can take enforcement action with respect to the screening and the condition that requires the owners of 606 West Falmouth Highway to plant some screening and to maintain it. The second part of this is the right-of-way issue, which I find very, very difficult, and probably really beyond the authority of this board to even decide. This board has no authority to decide private property rights. And I also have a question as to whether or not that condition number six that's in that decision that's been referred to many times here, the '05 decision, which says that you shan't use the right-of-way, it really is effective, because in my way, the way I was always taught, when you have a right-of-way that's been granted by a document recorded in the registry of deeds, the only way to get rid of it is to have another document signed by the person whose, whose benefits from that right-of-way signed, recorded in the registry of deeds. I'm not sure that a condition in a special permit has that legal effect. But my inclination would be to take the building commissioner's decision, to overrule him in part, and direct him to enforce all the provisions of the zoning, of the, excuse me, of the special permits, not just the most recent one, but all of them, with respect to screening and maintaining the screening, but affirm his decision to decline to enforce the use of the right-of-way, because I think that is a legal issue with questions of fact, with questions of law, that is best decided by a court.
Jerry?
I agree with what everybody said, that I think we're looking, in my mind, at the screening and not the right-of-way. The one question I had asked, and I don't know, and I forgot, I was trying to get to it, and I had lost my notes, isn't there a 10-year provision on a special condition that after that 10 years, a violation of that condition is no longer applicable?
No.
No? Okay. I thought it was by right, okay?
That, that applies to structures, Bill. Structures.
Well, so shrubbery is a structure.
No.
Okay.
Unless it's fake.
So I, I'm going to agree, looking at what was before us based on the correspondence, what the folks in Old Dock- what the folks on Old Dock Road requested and what was outlined in the building commissioner's determination, the two issues that I think are probably before the board are, have to do with screening and, yes, the other condition number six about use of the right-of-way. I agree with Mr. Duffy. I think that the building commissioner does have the right to examine that issue and take it up. It's very clear in the decision of 5405 as well as previous ones that, who is responsible for maintaining the screening. Whether he believes it to be sufficient or not, it's a different issue. I think that his response, or some of this could have been put to bed if his response had been a little bit more in-depth instead of a simple one-line refusal to enforce. As for the issue about condition number six about use of the right-of-way, I, I agree with Mr. Duffy. I think that it involves determinations about, or declaratory judgment from either the Superior Court or the district, or a, excuse me, a land court about who does in fact actually have rights, and it's well beyond, I think, this board's purview to even take the matter up. So my inclination would be to overrule the building commissioner in part as to the issue of screening. I think that was condition number two, but not to overrule him regarding condition number six. The parties can either resolve this amicably or they can litigate with the folks in Superior or Land Court to get determinations about those particular right-aways. I will put on the record, I think that people should deserve to get the benefit of their bargain, especially when people come before the zoning board asking for increased use and the negotiations back and forth. But as a matter of law and as an attorney, I think that, I have to agree with Mr. Duffy, I think that the, a separate document could have or should have been executed, clearly extinguishing the use of the right-of-way, that we don't necessarily have that. It's not really for us to decide. So it's kind of my inclination about where we are and what we should be doing. Having those, does anyone have a position that's changed a little bit? Proceeding, O'Reilly, does this require four and one or three to two? This is a majority.
To overrule the building commissioner.
Four and one.
I would add one recommendation, though, if you pursue your vote the way you're moving, is it may be somewhat difficult for the building commissioner to specifically enforce the landscape where it's on a private property. And so it might be easier for the board to direct, if that's the way you're going, that that screening be reinstalled.
My only one concern, though, and I'd like to hear from other members of the board, is in reviewing 5405, it was clear that the screening needed to be in place. The words perpetuity are not there. Is there a point after 17 years that, as a matter of law, I'll defer to our former town council, essentially that requirement is discharged?
But I think the condition says to maintain.
Was the word maintain, okay.
The word maintain is in there.
I think that would satisfy, that satisfies Mike.
There's some kind of ongoing responsibility to, to maintain the.
My suggestion then would be that, you know, it'd be enforced in accordance with a landscape plan that was approved by the board. I don't, I think it's, it would be, it's improper for, I don't, I don't believe legally we could say, well, you're going to have to put up a seven-foot grudge fence. It's not in the conditions. So I would suggest that the condition and the plan that was approved by the board in 2005, the document that controls here, and that's what needs to be maintained.
So that's the motion?
Was the.
Whatever was submitted afterwards in 5405.
We're going to deny the building commissioners. Overrule them, right?
In part.
In part. Someone restate it.
Was the, was the 1979 fence in place in 2005?
Not a big testimony about that.
Does anybody know?
The remnants of.
Step up, sir. Thank you.
Yes, still the Paul Sellers, 16 Old Dock Road. The remnants of that wire fence are still there. The structure, support structure is still in place. And the landscape plan that you would reference is 2008.
2008? So, yes. Should have to be included in your motion?
I haven't made a motion. We're still kind of, we're still kind of formulating.
Sounded like you were well on your way.
So I guess, the first part of the motion would be to affirm the decision of the building commissioner in regards to enforcement of condition six regarding.
We have to close the hearing.
No. Oh, we need to, well, close the hearing. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion opposed.
I'll speed this in second, but Ms. Burpee, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a vote. All right. Regarding, I'll make a motion then. First part of the motion would be to affirm the building commissioner's denial to enforce condition number six regarding the right-of-way. If you're on board on that. The second part then would be to overrule the building commissioner's determination regarding the screening, which would be direct him to enforce according to the landscape plan.
That's right.
There's also supposed to be signage.
Well, that's in the plan, isn't it?
It's in the plan.
Regarding the landscape plan, pursue it to the decision in 5405.
With the chain and the signage.
Whatever that says. Is that acceptable, liberal?
Works for me.
Yep.
So that's my motion.
Second.
I'll second. Give that, give that to you. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? That is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for their presentations and their comments this evening.
Appreciate the.
Why don't we take a break after the next one? Sure, ma'am.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Second one?
You need to take that up with the enforcement official. We don't do enforcement.
So this is a continuation, right?
Yes, in letter, yes, he will be, yeah, he will get a determination from us.
You need the door open?
I don't have to. You'll, you'll be back in front of us.
Well, you've got to read.
Talk to O'Reilly. She'll, she'll direct you what you need to do, ma'am. Thank you.
Ashley, is there a new engineering for NICA? A new plan, but no new.
Good night.
Okay.
Good night.
You just have to read any of those, because, yeah, they're already done.
This is our leader, Tony Mark.
Yeah.
So we can just give it back to.
Yeah, all the way back to.
We're still in session. Next up, under continuations, we have permit, or excuse me, request 65-22, NICA Development LLC, 259-263 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise the existing structures and construct two duplex buildings in one single-family dwelling on a combined parcel. And up on this project is myself, Scott, Suzanne, Mark, and Jerry Potamus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your patience.
For the record, Kevin Klower, I am here tonight representing NICA Development LLC, the owners of 259 and 263 Old Main Road. I'm joined tonight by Alex Zelfand, one of the owners, as well as Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering. This project's been before the board on two, two occasions, but we've made some revisions to the plan in response to some of the comments and concerns that were expressed by the board and some of the abutters. So we'd like to refresh you as to, as to where we stand and how we're hoping to move this forward. This property is, of course, located in North Falmouth Village. It's two lodge, two lots, rather, that will be merged relative to this application. Combined lot is 44,438 square feet, and it is split-zoned V3 and residential B. Currently, there's a dilapidated single-family dwelling at the front of the lot that's nonconforming to front yard setback. There's a barn located in the rear lot, which is nonconforming. It's an accessory structure without a primary structure, and it's also not setback at all from the lot line. We've updated our proposal. What is being requested now is two duplexes located in the business zone. The single-family structure that was in the residential B portion of the property has been eliminated entirely. So we're only requesting those two duplexes. This project, again, has been reviewed and approved by Planning Historic. Historical allowed us to raise the existing home as there's no historical or architectural significance, and they are in favor of the proposed design. Planning did approve the proposed site plan. We will have to modify that decision to update with the new plan, but we're decreasing the usage in a pretty significant way. Only, we're eliminating the second driveway, which would be on the right-of-way and the single-family home. The project as revised has proposed lot coverage by structure of 11.6%, which is well below the 20% allowed by right in residential B and the 35 allowed in B3. Lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking would be only 21.3%, again, well below the percentages allowed. The buildings as proposed will eliminate the non, all the existing nonconformities, the front yard setback and the barn, and will now comply with setback requirements and all lot coverage requirements, both by structures and structures, paving, and parking. This can be allowed under 240-51A5. We're still under the old zoning by law with this application, which allows for multifamily use provided the density is less than 60 units per acre. The business zone is not adversely affected, and the uses are not noxious to multifamily housing. Has been noted, there's been many similar special permits issued throughout West and North Falmouth, allowing this type of development under 243C and 240-51A5. It's been mentioned here tonight that we want applicants and abutters to get together. Well, in this case, we have, actually. We've been speaking with the abutters and we've agreed to a few terms if the special permit were to be approved. The applicant has agreed to abandon the right-of-way, which would, provides access to 263 as a condition precedent to a building permit. So we'd want that as a condition before we're able to get a building permit, but they've agreed to do so. And they've also agreed to provide a five-foot naturally vegetated buffer for the area now known as 263. So that would be for this back lot back here, there'd be a five-foot vegetated buffer in its natural condition. I spoke with Mr. Petrucci today, who's the abutter in this property here. I don't want to speak for him, but I think it's fair to say he was amenable and appreciative of these changes. The proposed structures, again, are completely conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. It's allowed by special permit. There's no new nonconformity, all the existing nonconformities being addressed. And I think the board's main, primary concern seemed to be with the split zone and the inclusion of a single-family house in the rear, which we have eliminated. I believe this project meets all the criteria under 243C, 51A5, and 24216. I'd be glad to address any questions the board has, but otherwise, I would ask that you grant the special permit.
Four questions. Start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
None.
We were on to this before when we were discussing the building in the back, and we used Tofias. And you disagreed with me, but you have since removed the one from the back, and Tofias states that you can use the property in the back to satisfy dimensional requirements, but then it must remain open, as you have done. But a dimensional requirement is the lot area, the width, and the frontage. And business three requires 40,000 square feet. You have 17,143 feet. You've used the back lot to satisfy the dimensional requirements, but only town meeting can rezone. So by merging the lots, you get a combined 44,438. Tofias dictates that if the back lot is used to satisfy a dimensional requirement, that's the lot area, cannot be reused for any purpose, as you have done. But neither Tofias nor the merges of lots, merging of the lots, changes the zoning districts. That can only be accomplished by town meeting with a two-thirds vote, following public hearings of the planning board. So basically, what you have is multifamily housing only allowed in residence B. So if you divide 17,143 feet by the 43,560, you come up with 2.36 units. You can't exceed six units per acre. You don't have an acre. You have enough for 2.36 units. I would suggest to you, and this isn't my position or place, that the best use for this thing would be a single-family in the front and a single-family in the back. And I'm sure you could probably get that out of this board, but other than that, you can't change the zoning.
We're not trying to change the zoning, Mr. Fineran.
But you are.
No, we're not. We're not, because.
Six units per acre.
And there's 44,000 square feet.
No, not, not according to Tofias. You, you can't.
You're, you're misinterpreting Tofias.
No, I'm not. I, I don't think so.
Respectfully, respectfully, sir.
We were, well, let me finish.
You've had, you've had your chance. Can I respond?
No. When we were discussing this last, you used the phrase dimensional requirements. Tofias uses dimensional requirements, and you use density. You're not allowed the density. You can only have six units per acre. You only have .39 acres roughly, so you can get 2.36 units.
So the lot as combined will be 44,000 square feet. You're allowed to take into account all of the square footage of the lot, not just the square footage in a zoning district. That's what Tofias represents.
Dimensional requirements, yes.
So the dimensional requirement of the lot is 44,000, the dimensional requirement of the, the dimensions of the lot will be 44,000 square feet, which exceeds what is required in the zoning district. We are not limited to just the square footage within that portion of the district. Tofias says you can take square footage from other districts to satisfy that requirement. It's not, it's not a require, so, so we have 44,000 square feet, which would allow for, in reality, six units. We're not requesting six units. We're requesting four units.
That's, the way I read it, that is incorrect. You are allowed six units per acre, and you have roughly .39 acres. You come out with somewhere over two units. You, you can't rezone.
No one's trying to rezone anything, Mr. Fineran. The zoning districts are what they are. But the Tofias decision states, states clearly, the calculation should run to the lot line and need not stop at the district boundary line. That was correct and strengthened, that was upheld by, by the, by the court in Tofias. That's exactly what they found. You're allowed to take square footage for the entirety of the lot. We're combining the lot. We have 44,000 square feet. We would be allowed to seek six units. We're requesting four units.
No, I don't see it that way.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Fineran, you're obviously not in favor of the project. Do you have any other specific questions?
No, that's.
Suzanne?
I like this, this plan myself. I'm glad you took the single-family dwelling out. I think it looks good on the plan.
Scott?
I, I'm there, I guess. You know, Mr. Fineran brings up very good points. I'm, I'm not an attorney, so you've, you did what we've always asked of all applicants. You went back, you talked to abutters, you reduce what your original ask was. That's all positive to me. This is a positive move, I think, from, as you mentioned, it's a dilapidated property today, so I'm in support of that. Hopefully, all of your math holds. You do have more than an acre of square footage, as long as you can aggregate the two properties. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
Public comment. Public comment.
For the record, I'm Tony Petrucci, 243 Old Main Road, director abutter. We are very pleased that there are only two duplexes in the business district now, that the single-family home is gone. I did not do any of the calculations, so I, I don't know what to say about that. But let me just say that we like the fact that there are only two duplexes in the front. As to coming to an agreement as it regards the right-of-way, as I understand it, we've agreed that the right-of-way will be extinguished upon issuance of a building permit. Am I correct?
We'd have to, we would have to extinguish the right-of-way in order to get the building permit.
Okay. And that there'll be a five-foot buffer maintained at all times in perpetuity, in perpetuity on the two hut, on the.
The border of, the, the.
263.
What is now 263.
And there's also landscaping plans for the rest of the law. All right. So as far as I'm concerned and my neighbor, we agree that if that is what the board decides, that there'll be two duplexes, if that's what the vote is, we'll be in favor of that.
Other public comment?
Point of clarification?
Certainly.
As we have heard many times tonight and before, extinguishing has to go before the land court.
This is going to be my question to.
So it's not, it's not land court property, so it wouldn't need to go through the land court. But what we would do is we would file a document with the registry of deeds stating that the right-of-way has been abandoned. We have relinquished any rights in the, in the right-of-way.
And that's the proper legal venue.
Yep. And that would be.
Do you have any objection to a condition from the board that you're going to do? Do you have any objection to a condition from the board that you're going to do that?
Well, I'd like, what I'd like to do is have there be a condition to getting a building permit. For the purpose that if this was to be appealed on some level, I wouldn't want, God forbid, they, they do that and then it be appealed. So I think that because the, because the building permit would have to come from, sign off from zoning...
That's very, that's realistic. It preserves property rights if you didn't get one. Any other additional questions in the board? Any board discussion before we decide to close? Start on this side. Hi, none. I'll just, well, two things. Thank you for working with your abutter. Makes our decision much easier when people's opposition to a project is dealt with. So, and in this case, any, any resistance I had to this project has certainly been taken off the table again. Shocked that you didn't talk about this as one of the nicest sections in North Falmouth, Kevin, so...
I did that the first hearing.
So I guess at this point, I'm in favor of the project. Mark?
I just have to reiterate that you have to use the numbers and you have to go by the decision. And this is a greater density than six units per acre. It can't be argued. And if we vote in favor of this project, we're voting in error.
Frank?
No further comment.
Jerry?
Am I voting in this specific issue?
Yes.
Okay. Then I agree with everybody at the board except for Mr. Fenner. I agree with it.
How would the board like to proceed at this point?
Make a motion to close.
Motion to close. Is there a second? Second, Scott, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, we are closed. How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion approve.
Motion approved by Suzanne. Is there a second?
Yes.
Jerry with a second. Findings?
Okay. Might need some help along the way here. Meets minimum requirement setback for the lot coverage. It's for the, the lot size is 44,438. Lot coverage by structure is 11.6. Lot coverage by structure, paving and parking is 21.3. We have referral comments from engineering, board of health and water. Drywells are proposed and the planning, I guess we'd follow planning decision. That's in the file also. Other?
Of the abutters have, at least two of the abutters have agreed.
Abutter's support, okay.
Just to make a note, the project is a merger of two existing lots to give the total lot coverage, and it is in two different zoning districts.
She has it under conditions.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know the height of these buildings.
For plan, oh, excuse me, that's conditions, excuse me. Conditions?
Okay. The requirement to merge the lots, we have to post the address per section 99-1. Planning board and engineering to make stormwater and soil erosion requirements. There's a requirement, permission from the tree warden to remove the trees on the right-of-way. We have septic for the board of health, driveway permit from engineering to meet the comments that were issued on 8/10/22. There's a limit of 12 bedrooms. Seems high, but install the landscaping plan and maintain it in perpetuity. I heard the comments that we're going to have to obtain, obviously obtain a building permit, and that is linked to abandoning the right-of-way, so that'll be extinguished. There's a landscape plan that has to be adhered to in perpetuity with a natural five-foot screen along the abutters to the right of the property, if you're on the road. Now ask for help after that.
Standard hours of work.
Standard hours?
For plans.
Conditions?
They wrote something about a buffer.
Right-of-way issued before the building permit.
I think, yeah, just to make sure that's clear, that the condition will be that the, to obtain a building permit, that the right-of-way needs to be extinguished and recorded. Jerry, any additional conditions?
No, thank you.
Mark?
No.
Maureen, were you getting anything?
I think we could have a saying, do we have books, law courses for engineering and water department?
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Oh, I'm opposed.
Okay. Four in favor, one against. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of your patience and hard work on this.
Next up, we have...
We have a bio break.
Absolutely. We'll take a five-minute recess to the sound of the next gavel.
Good. Just be with the problems. Oh, okay. All right, let's get through this.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome back. Next up on our continuation, we have hearing 105-22 Bowen, trustees 102 Grand Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a modification of existing permits number 110-15 and 37-21 to remove condition number two, special permit in 110-15, and increase the total lot coverage. Property is under an enforcement order by letter dated September 14th, 2022.
Okay, with the fire department has no issues with the project as drawn?
I'm sorry, did we read the opening notice of this already? Don't believe we did, so we need to start with that.
110-15 or 105-22?
Okay, this is application number 105-22. John Iron, Anna A. Bowen, trustees 37 Chappaquaatt Road, Mashpee, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a modification of existing permits number 110-15 and number 37-21 pursuant to sections 240 10.2A, formerly 243C of the Code of Falmouth to remove conditions number two of the special permit, number 110-15, and increase the total lot coverage. Property is under enforcement order by letter dated September 14th, 2022. Subject property is 102 Grand Avenue, Falmouth, Mass.
Referrals?
Okay. We have no comment from Scott McGann at Board of Health. We have, apologize, Scott Schulster from Engineering, there's several pages of comments, of which I'm sure we'll review. Excuse me for one second. The fire department has no issues with the project as drawn.
There was letters?
Two. I don't see any.
Two letters in support, actually, just a sec.
I don't, I don't know where they are.
That's all right. Two letters of support.
Two letters of support.
Procedurally, I believe, Mr. Finnern is in a butter and you're stepping off, is that correct?
Yes.
And I'll be pointing Jerry then.
Yes, and I'd like to make a public disclosure that, let me get this right, disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee, because I am a butter, I filed it with the Board of Selectmen, they approved it, and then at the Board's recommendation, I had town council look at it, and she affirmed, with the Board of Selectmen, said that I can be impartial.
Fair enough, just make sure that we have a copy of the file and the record will so reflect.
I go to the town clerk, but I can get you a copy. I don't know where it's supposed to be.
That's fine, the scottages on the record, we can get it in there if need be. For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair members of the Board. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in town, and I am representing John and Anna Bowen, the owners of 102 Grand Avenue. I'm joined tonight by the Bowens, they're here with us, as well as Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering. We are seeking permission to modify the existing special permit, which is 110-15, as modified by administrative modification number 37-21. This property, 102 Grand Ave, is located in Heights on the corner of Montgomery Court and Grand Ave. It's a very dense neighborhood, the lot's 3,730 square feet, and it's in the RSC zoning district. Presently, there are two dwellings on the lot, which were acknowledged by the special permit 110-15, under section 243A, acknowledged as having existed since prior to 1959. The primary or larger dwelling is a three-bedroom cape, the secondary is a one-bedroom cottage, so it's four bedrooms on the lot total. Footprint by structures is currently 41%, where 20 is allowed by right and 25 by special permit, and the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking is 59%, where 40% is allowed by right. Like much of the Heights, this is well in excess of the percentages that are allowed. We are requesting modification of that special permit as amended under 243C for pre-existing non-conforming structures that can be altered by special permit. So there's a few matters in play here. First, we're seeking permission to, we're seeking modification of condition number two in special permit 110-15. That condition states that parking for the dwelling structures must remain on-site. So what you see here is the parking area. The parking area at its depth here is about eight feet, eight to 10 feet from the property line. And given the layout of the premises and the need for parking for more than two cars, the condition is simply not feasible without an increase to the already non-conforming lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. The driveway, like I said, goes from, I think, I said eight, I'm sorry, it's 11 feet, 11 to 12 feet, which is not sufficient to park a car without encroaching into the street layout. Parking is typically 18 feet, that's where the parking stall is, in depth. If parking was required to be entirely on-site, the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking would have to increase, and it's already non-conforming. The applicant had obtained a license from the select board, allowing a parking spot in the Grand Avenue layout, but because of that condition in the special permit, we're in violation of the special permit, that's what the result of the enforcement order is. So we're seeking to remove that as a condition, because it's simply not feasible to comply with. If not willing to remove the condition, we'd need to, I suppose, seek a variance for an increase, but we'd need to have an increase in already non-conforming lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. I think that this can be addressed in a way that's appropriate and without a detriment to the visual character, or an elimination of aesthetic features on the property. The second issue is a correction of the incorrect lot coverage percentages in the administrative approval. The special permit in 2015 acknowledged two dwellings, but it was granted using what we'd call a mortgage survey. There's no lot coverage calculations on the plan, there's no mention of lot coverage in that decision. The plan prepared in 2021 had incorrect calculations. I have the 2021 plan in front of you, and it didn't pick or account for hardscape, therefore the misstated proposed lot coverage leads us to appear as though we're non-compliant today. In looking at this plan, it appears the calculation for lot coverage by structures, paving and parking only accounts for the structure as proposed, which was 1,521 square feet, and a small parking area of 300 square feet, which would equal 1,821. That's how they got to 48.8%, but that's not correct. It doesn't show the walkways to the main dwelling, the walkway to the cottage, or the patio that existed between the main dwelling and the shed and the cottage. Mr. Santos did prepare a lot coverage exhibit reflecting what was there. The lot coverage as shown, it was lot coverage of structures, lot coverage by structured paving and parking, and 59%, which matches what exists today. We met with Mr. Street in the building department to review, he agreed with our analysis, but felt that this board would be the appropriate way to handle that. This isn't a common request, in fact, I've never made a request like this before, but it seems clear that the 2021 plan didn't take into account all aspects of the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, and the resulting figures in that administrative approval are incorrect as a result. As such, we're requesting to amend that special permit as modified to reflect the correct lot coverage calculations as they exist today, which match what should have been done in 2021. That said, the applicant is proposing to lower that lot coverage by structures, paving and parking even further, down to 57% by removing some hardscape and increasing the lawn area. So in sum, what we are requesting is a removal of the condition that's impossible to comply with, with a clear solution that's not detrimental, and correction of incorrect calculations. Again, I know this is unusual. I'm happy to address any questions the board might have, but believe this can all be granted in compliance with the bylaw.
Start with these guys.
I guess Attorney Clower, let's, just walk me through, there's, in the file, we have multiple pages of non-compliance. Driveway permit was constructed but does not meet what was shown in the approved plan. The license was granted by the select board, but encroachments in the right-of-way, cobbles are at the corner of the street. Additional parking was, I guess was supposed to be not impervious, is impervious. I guess, can you walk me through where we are on all of these things that are, I guess, non-compliant?
So, so there is a cobblestone apron on the corner there that we, I mentioned in correspondence to the board, our intent would be to seek a license for that, we have a license request prepared for that, but we wanted to come through this process first. Part of the non-compliance was, the parking was, the parking license on Grand Ave is in conflict with the special permit decision that says you have to have all the parking on-site. There was some additional parking added on Montgomery Court that is a private right-of-way, doesn't require a license from the town, but again, we have reflected that in the plans, we are at the lot coverage that we should have been at in 2021, we're proposing to reduce that. I think the driveway permit, I think Tim's been dealing with the engineering department, we've been back and forth with them, I believe they're satisfied with what we proposed, and really what we're trying to do is establish a baseline, because the baseline we have right now isn't feasible or workable. There's never, there's never been lot coverage by structures, paving and parking here of 48%. That was an incorrect, incorrect calculation on the plan, because it didn't take into account the hardscape. So what we're trying to do is establish an appropriate baseline, because there was never one established throughout the process.
I agree, it was very confusing.
Yes.
To try and keep up with your numbers. So the, the parking area along Montgomery that is impervious, is that going to be modified? Or you're going to seek to approve what's currently there that's hardscaped, that here in the file is impervious?
So, so this, this area here, that I'm outlining with the mouse, that is included in the lot coverage calculations, but we're still reducing it from 59% down to 57%.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Where am I getting the 62.7%? It is confusing doing these, these figures.
Where are you seeing 62.7%?
I mean, I have it on the, on the thing submitted. Lot coverage, structures, paving and parking, 62.7.
Oh, so that was, that was actually pre, so it is confusing. So what we show here is, the 62.7 was what existed prior to the 2021 modification, and that was a reduction down to 59%. It was reflected under different numbers, but Tim's been able to go back and reconstruct what was there, and establish a lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, pre the modification in '21 of 62.7. So after, so the resulting is 59%, which is where we are today.
Why can't we make the front parking thing gravel?
The front?
Impervious.
So, are we referring to this section here?
On Grand Ave, yeah, and the other one.
Well, this one's not in the lot, so it's not counted towards the lot coverage.
Okay.
But this one, whether, whether we call it, whether it's gravel or whether it's pavers, it still counts towards lot coverage by structured paving and parking, because it's a required parking area.
Okay. It's just, it's like a parking lot. Anyway, that's all I have.
Frank? I echo the comments of my other members that it's confusing. If we take a look at the plan that's on the screen, down in the lower right-hand corner, you have one parking lot for two cars, okay?
Yes.
Now, I think you're representing that the portion of that parking that is on the lot, or on the site, is not sufficient to park cars, because they stick out into the right-of-way of Grand Avenue.
Correct.
Okay. And you do have a license from the select board to allow that encroachment.
For, we have, we have a license with the select board for this parking area here in front of the house.
But what about, what about the one on the lower right?
So, we'd be happy to include that in any request for a license, because we're going to have to submit a new, a new license request regardless.
Well, you're absolutely going to have to, because if the car sticks out into the, into the right-of-way, you have an encroachment.
Mm-hmm.
So that is not licensed by the Board of Selectmen, the lower right portion?
No, not currently.
But, all right, because I thought it was. Now, the section that's in front, the parker, the pull-off area that's within the right-of-way of Grand Avenue before, in front of the front door, you said that has been approved by the select?
That was approved by the, by the select board, and that's partially why we're not in compliance, well, that is why we're not in compliance with the special permit.
All right, now let's look at Montgomery Court.
Mm-hmm.
How did that parking area get there?
Montgomery Court is a private way.
Yes, it is.
In that area. So that, this was added, but again, other lot coverage has been reduced, so we're still at the 59% we should have been at. We're seeking to establish that 59% as the baseline today, so we have something to move forward with.
But, but a car parked in the pull-off on Montgomery Court is going to not be located entirely on the site, it's going to encroach into the layout of Montgomery Court?
It would still be within, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be extending into the paved, the road pavement area, and the select board can't grant a license from Montgomery Court.
No, they can't, because it's a private road, and I'm wondering, you seem to be asking us to approve the parking of a vehicle along Montgomery Court that's half in and half off.
We're just, we're not asking you to allow us to park there, because I don't think the board can allow us.
No, we can't.
But I think what we're asking for is for that area of hardscape within the property line to be allowed. That's what we're asking for.
You're not asking us for permission to park there, but you're going to anyways, right?
I don't think the board can grant permission even if we asked it.
But it's a private road, and I, when I visited this site, and I drove up and down Montgomery Court, I didn't see any other cars parked along that road. Everybody seems to be able to pull off. So this is, this is an outlier here.
So, with a private way, generally speaking, you own to the center line, subject to rights of others, to pass and repass.
Right.
Using this area of Montgomery Court wouldn't impede the right of anyone else, because we're still not going to be within the actual road layout. Well, being, I'm sorry, we're being within the road layout and not within the paving area, unless they decided they wanted to make a case out of it.
Mm-hmm. So by asking us to eliminate the condition that parking be on the site, you're basically authorizing us to allow the two cars to be parked down on the lower right, subject to a license from the Board of Selectmen, to stick out into the right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And then to park one other vehicle along Montgomery Court that's maybe in and outside the site, depending. The parking pull-off in front of the house is taken care of by the Selectmen's license. So if, so if we granted your request and said that you can park in the lower right-hand corner, all parking in the lower right-hand corner must be on the lot unless license, unless an encroachment into the right-of-way is authorized by the Board of Selectmen. We could say that and you'd be happy.
Yes.
Right. Now, what, I'm also confused by some of the other members, as they are, about if you go ahead and develop this property exactly as you have represented it on the board, what will be the lot coverage, impervious lot coverage by parking, paving and structure?
57%.
57%.
We're currently at 59, we're proposing 57.
My plan's at 62, you gotta look.
That was the pre, that was the pre-2001.
And if you wind up getting, all right, I don't, okay, I guess I stop questions right now, I'm not totally, Terry, on what's going on, but.
I'm equally confused, but I think the property looks good, it's in harmony, and subject to some conditions, I think it's, well, I'm speaking to you, that's for our discussion, sorry. No questions.
So, Mr. Clower, referencing the plan submitted by John P. Doyle, you're saying that the lot coverage, paving, parking and structures, it says 48.8, was incorrect?
It is, because it doesn't account for any of the existing hardscape.
Okay. And you're saying there's not going to be incre, I mean, based on that plan, it says existing parking shell surface, and there's pictures of that, it's now going to propose to pavers?
Yes.
You're saying that the total impervious surface is going to go down?
Because whether that's shell or whether that's pavers, it still counts, because it's a required parking area.
You would agree, though, that shells are a little more porous than the pavers?
Sure, but in terms of the calculation, right? In terms of the calculation, you still have to include any required parking area as, as lot coverage by structures, paving and parking.
My concern with this is just, it's just runoff of stormwater right out of the public roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I may have some.
I don't, I don't think engineering brought that up as a concern. I could be mistaken in that.
I understand, you don't need to be an engineer, though, if you have an asphalt lot and rain falls on it, it's going somewhere. It's going, water will go to the lowest point. I do seem to remember that in my basic science class, so. I may have additional questions, thank you, though.
Can I ask a quick one?
Of course.
Kevin, you said that you, when you added that strip on the side on the private road, that you, you got to have that pervious, impervious, because you used other, you got rid of other impervious on the lot. What did you do to finagle that?
Tim, do you remember? Good evening, for the record, Tim Santos from, sorry, from Merrill Engineers. I'm going to try to find this, hold on one second.
I don't like the one on the private road.
So, just to back up and make it more confusing, okay?
You're going.
So, I'm just going to try to make it a little easier to understand the numbers, if I can. So this exhibit is what I call the first exhibit, March 2021, prior to construction, okay?
Is that what I'm reading, Kevin?
So, and I'm.
Prior to construction of what?
Prior to the reconstruction of dwellings on the property.
So, and frankly, in 2021, there was an administrative modification issued to allow a change to the front area. It wasn't, it wasn't a complete tear-down of the house, it was just that, that front vestibule area, steps, landing was changed, and there was one other aspect of it, but it was, that was what was allowed by that, what was added.
A dorm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, by that 2021 modification. So this is prior to that construction, this is the lot coverage.
So when Mr. Doyle prepared this plan and this plan was submitted, this plan's submitted more like what I, what I would call a certified plot plan, where it shows the dwelling, the property lines, setbacks, and the parking area, it shows no hardscape. So what we tried to do, when we were hired, we prepared an existing conditions plan, and this, and these are the numbers we came up with, the 41%, the 59%, that's what exists on the lot today. So when I went back and reviewed Mr. Doyle's plan, I noticed there's, there's no patios, there's no hardscape, there's no pavers, there's no walkways. So what we did was we prepared these exhibits, and when we prepared the exhibits, we used aerials, photos, we went and met with Mr. Street, we reviewed how we came up with these numbers, and kind of tried to explain the process of what was the original number, 62.7% and John's plan showing the 48.8%, or Mr. Doyle's plan showing the 48.8%, and in our opinion, it was, I'm not going to say it was an error, but it should have been shown differently when it came before the board. So then what we did was we prepared the new plan to show the, what exists on the lot today at 59%, and so I'm getting to the, the point of how we reduced it. If I can just get there, hold on. So right now, we have 429 square feet of, sorry, 369 square feet of where the shell area was, and when we're all said and done, there'll be 254 square feet. So that was one of the main reductions that allowed us to keep this 104 square feet and stay under that 59%. I mean, all the numbers are shown here through the exhibits, they're all broken down, you know, I can, I can go through each one of them, but they are all broken down. There, there is a reduction, and this is, you know, I've been in this town doing work for 25 years, I've never come across anything like this. So it's, it's kind of strange and unique, but it's kind of, you have to understand the original 2001 plan, what should have been shown, what wasn't shown. The 62.7% is what should have been shown. What exists right now is 59%. What we're proposing is 57%.
So was there no change that was, took place on the property between the Doyle survey and your survey?
The Doyle survey was done prior to construction in 2021, in March of 2021. Our survey was done this year, January 23.
But beyond the survey for the structures themselves, so are you suggesting that the lot coverage, that there was no change made in the lot coverage between that Doyle survey and your survey?
I'm saying that the Doyle survey's lot coverage, the total lot coverage, is incorrect.
But that, right, but again, so was, but was there a change to hardscape on the property between the Doyle survey and your survey?
Between 2021 and 2023, yes, but the 2021 exhibit that I, that we prepared from aerials and photos, that is the plan that should be compared to Doyle's survey from 2021. Doyle's survey just does not show any of the hardscape. Let me, let me try to get to it. So his survey does not show, you know, there's 190 square feet of a patio between the main house and the cottage, it's not shown on his plan. There's walkways in the front, five square feet, 51 square feet, they're not shown on his plan. That's all counted as part of parking, paving for the total lot coverage, as well as the rinse station in the rear, there's a concrete rinse station. Yeah, and there's the walkway to the cottage, there's the landing to the cottage, those are hardscape structures that were not shown in his calculation.
But then you got his calcs of all his new hardscapes and added more hardscape.
No, his plan, the only hardscape he can, he didn't include any hardscape, he included 300 square feet for parking.
But I mean, you, you saw with your drones or whatever you used.
Yes, I just, we, we used those aerial, just Google Earth, we used aerials from that, and we used photos from the owner.
And you saw it was wrong?
Correct.
And then you added to it?
And then we created this exhibit that shows the hardscape what it should have been. So the plan that Mr. Doyle submitted should have shown the patios, the walkways, and that hearts, that total number would have been higher than his 48.8.
And Mr. Doyle didn't show the one on the private road, the hardscape?
That did not exist at the time.
Right.
That did not exist.
So there's been an increase in impervious space on a tremendous 3,700 square foot lot?
No, there's a decrease.
So this is, so this is, to try to clarify everything as best I can. So what we're showing is, this is hardscape here, this is, this is a patio here, these were not counted. Those do not exist, well, this, it's been reduced today. This has been added over here, yes. This area was added, but this is, oh, it's existing. So this is crushell, they didn't count the brick walkway here, this is not hardscape here, this has been added, but other areas have been reduced, there's no walkway here, there's been reductions from what existed in March of 2021 to today.
How many parking spaces does this, this lot need?
Three and a half. Two parking spaces for a house with two bedrooms or more, and one and a half parking spaces for a one-bedroom house.
Frank or Jerry?
Now, the, going back to the lower, to the principal parking area in front of the cottage, it's. it's 429 square feet, and that is inadequate to park two cars without a license from the Board of Selectment.
Without, without, you'd have to move this line further up.
In other words, get rid of the front lawn and then walkway.
And, but that's going to increase, that's going to increase the non-conforming lot coverage by structures, paving and parking.
Yeah, okay.
At least it's safer.
So, but, so you really, you can't comply with the condition as it currently exists unless you get this license from the Select Board.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, if they give you one, fine. You have a license for the parking area in the front, but on Montgomery Court, I don't think we can help you. I mean, you, there's a condition that says that the parking must be provided on the lot, and you have to go beyond the lot line.
Well, that's true, that's true even for the front parking area in front of the cottage. That's why we're trying to remove that condition.
Yes, but the Selectmen have given you a license, and I think we can say, well, if the Selectmen who represent the town, who is the owner of a public way, Grand Avenue, give you a license, it's just a license. They're not giving you any interest in it. They're just allowing you to do it. Then, you know, I'm not going to get in a fight with the Select Board. But Montgomery Court is a different item. It's a private way, and, you know, even though you do technically own to the center line, you own it in common with everybody else who has a right to use it, too.
So, as long, but as long as you're not impeding their ability to pass and repass on.
And that's an assumption that you're making.
Well, it's not within the pavement area. It's not within the layout of the paving. Just one thing, Mr. Duffy, I would say that actually part of how this started is, and part of the reason we're trying to remove that as a condition, is because the building department took the position that the license, even though it was granted by the Board of Selectmen, is in violation of the special permit that says all parking must be on the site. That's how this whole thing started. So, that's why we're requesting that being removed as a condition.
It's also difficult to go back in the time machine where the folks that were making determinations originally were making them with the improper numbers, too.
I couldn't agree more. My question to the administrator, what were the representations made on the previous application as to what the lot coverage was?
So, we had a stamp survey that was submitted to the file, and that's where the numbers came from.
But a condition to provide for all the parking on the site makes sense, especially in this neighborhood where everybody else seems to be able to pull off the street. And it's a very, very dense neighborhood.
Even if you were, how about if you were to say, unless by license of the Board of Selectmen? Because that would, that would.
Yeah, but the Selectmen can't give you a license on Montgomery Court. Nobody can.
And I can, I can discuss that with my client. Because if we can get those three, those three spaces permitted.
You may have to limit the tenant for the cottage to one car.
I don't think that's an issue. I don't think that would be an issue.
It's the Montgomery Court that bothers me, just so that you know.
So, I, and I can, and I'd be happy to discuss that with my client. But with regards to the existing condition number two in the special permit, even if that was to be modified to say, unless by license of the Board of Selectmen, that would address our, that would address my need.
I find that acceptable personally, but I can't, I can't get myself to help you out in Montgomery Court.
So, would we, in that thought process, Attorney Clower, are you saying that you would remove that pull-off area on Montgomery Court and replace it with grass?
I'd have to discuss with my client first. I can't, I don't want to, I don't, you know, I don't want to make promises for them that...
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just, we're trying to get to a solution here. But again, I hate to have anybody take, whoever did the work, did great work. It looks very nice, but I kind of agree with Mr. Duffy. We're, we're trying to help out here. And again, it seems like folks got ahead of themselves and made a nice impervious place to park, but I don't think that necessarily, that should have been accomplished, quite honestly. And again, with the, if the Select Board wants to give you parking there, I think that that makes logical sense. That's above and beyond.
And that would, I mean, that would, that would, that would address our biggest need, which is dealing with the violation in the eyes of the building department. And their, in their eyes, our violation is that we are parking off-site when the condition says it has to be parked on-site.
Okay. Jerry?
Mr. Santos, given what we have now as to what Mr. Doyle has got, what, I don't know if I'm going to request it later or not. What's the increase in runoff? 147 square feet?
That's a good question. The increase in runoff would be actually 104 square feet because right now, there's currently parking in this area here, whether it's crushells that get crushed and become impervious over time, like, or whether it's pavers, it's the same thing, in my mind.
Okay.
That's just my, that's just my opinion.
I just.
Okay, the patio exists, it's going to remain. So, it's really the 104 square feet, and if there's discussion about potentially that being removed, then there would be actually probably a decrease because when this parking gets rebuilt, this area here, if anyone's looking at the screen, is going to become one. Does that help address it?
Yeah, no, no, I think it was, yes, it does. The other question I had is, gets back to what you were saying and what Mr. Duffy's saying, is if there's grass there or cobblestones, people can still park on grass versus parking on cobblestones. What does putting, or maybe it's for discussion later. I mean, I go by there every day, so it's, and I know what you're talking about. So, if someone parking on the grass there, or if they're parking cobblestones, that's still a private right-of-way issue. Do you mind correcting that?
I would agree with that, yes, Mr. Tannenbaum.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up questions on the board? Public comment?
Hi, Jonathan O'Reilly, 14 Montgomery Ave. I wrote a letter in support of allowing Mr. Bowen and his wife to, supporting the current plan. If you've been in the Heights in the summer, cars are up and down, Mister Court, all the streets, on the side streets all summer, people are parking in the street. I think this is the safest solution to a problem. You can see it's very, very tight there. He has very limited options of what he can do, and I think this is the best, the best plan that someone could come up with in the current circumstances. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Holmes, June Cader, 11 Cornell Way in Wacoite. The bottom line for me to look at this is, the first plan Mr. Doyle did was a mistake. So, I know that the, they took a plan, put a stamp, didn't really recognize how the problems had with the, with the, how the impervious and all that. So, I think Mr. Santos did a beautiful job. Everything in there looks good. Helping, you know, Montgomery is a problem, is a very tight road. You can't even turn around in there. You got to go through somebody's driveway. This way, at least you can pull on the side a little bit. So, I think pretty much is a plus, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Other public comment? Would like to have some discussion.
I'd like to see if Mr. Clower's conference with his client about the Montgomery Court parking space.
So, what I'd like to do is request a continuance because part of it is I'd like to have a conversation with the building commissioner as well about what constitutes pervious and impervious for flagstones and whether or not we can.
Cobblestones.
You know, pavers. Because you can have pavers that are separated and dry-laid that aren't counted towards.
Right.
So, I'd like to have a discussion with the building commissioner on that because I think, I think that we can address potentially your concern, Mr. Duffy. But we're not going to be able to do that tonight. So, I'd like to request a continuance so that we can do that and amend our plan accordingly, if possible.
Do we have a date?
May 11th or May 25th.
I don't know that we'd be able to have something to you by next Tuesday for the 11th meeting. So.
May 25th?
Yes, please.
Motion to continue to May 25th.
There are seconds. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. That is a vote. Thank you, Mr. Clower. Moving on to the agenda, moving on to our agenda, we're into new hearings. First up, we have hearing number 25-23, Honeywell, 3 Quisett Ave, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing garage, adding a screen porch above.
To Tim's point, they've applied to the zoning vote of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 10.1C3, formerly 240, 3C of the Code of Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the existing garage, adding a screen porch above on subject property known as 3 Quisett Ave, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Property is connected to sewer, but no wastewater division comments, as adding the garage and the deck will not affect the wastewater connection. There's no comments from, I don't even see the board.
There isn't a lot of comments in there, though.
From the assessors, no comments. From planning, plans are on file at the Board of Appeals. Apologize, folks. Help, there's no issues. Property's on town sewer. Concom a cross-foot determination applicability has been filed for the above referenced property and was scheduled to be heard on March 29. Nothing from water. I believe that's, I believe that's it. Any correspondence in file? A letter of support, one letter of support for the applicant. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, a Falmouth attorney representing the applicant, George Honeywell, and Rebecca O'Sullivan Honeywell, who are here tonight, along with Tom Bunker, whose firm has done the engineering and survey, and Brett Bowen, who's been the architect for this project. This is a property in Woods Hole. It's highlighted here on the assessor's map at 3 Quisett Ave. And the project proposes to remove the existing garage, to reconstruct or reuse the existing deck, stairs and landing, construct a new garage with a screen porch above. And there'll be an increase in the garage height from eight feet four and a half inches to 15 feet three and a half inches due to the screen porch. This is a picture of the front of the house, if some of you have not been able to get there to look at the site. And the site does drop off. You'll see, this is a view of the rear of the house as well as the garage that's proposed to be replaced. And here's another view of the garage. You'll see that there is not a driveway into the garage. The applicant uses it essentially for boat, boat storage and brings boats in there, but not vehicles. This is the deck that connects now to the garage, and then the proposal, an aerial view of that deck. So, the proposal is to expand that garage and connect it with a screen porch and a deck, new deck system. So, we have a developed neighborhood. We have lot coverage at 12.92%, well under the 20%, overall 40% required, 16,345 square feet on the lot size and zone residential C. This is Mr. Bunker's plan, and you'll see from the site plan that this is the garage area here. There is a non-conforming setback on this lot line here. So, and this is a blow-up version of the garage, and you can see the difference here where we are proposing to open up that setback slightly. These are the elevation plans showing the proposed screen porch over the new garage and how it will connect with the existing dwelling. So, all of these are in your file. Under the zoning bylaw, this is an application under section 240-3C, and I've given you the recodified section of the bylaw as well because we have that non-conforming structural setback to the side yard lot line. The existing setback is two feet and the proposed setback is 4.2 feet. There'll be a minor increase in lot coverage by structure by about 55 square feet and minor increase overall, in overall lot coverage by the same amount. So, as, in terms of the zoning bylaw standards, we have an improvement to that non-conforming garage setback. We don't have any impacts on traffic. The property is on the sewer, and the, Amy Lowell has given her referral that there is no increased sewer flow from screen porch or new garage. So, no impacts there. It will allow for an enhanced garage, which will be a benefit to the home, the owners and the neighborhood. No increase in bedrooms, no adverse impacts on the butter dwellings or neighborhood. And as far as the standards go, I would submit it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. There would be beneficial impacts and that the standards of the bylaw are met. The conservation commission did approve the project under an RDA, which I did file for the record. In terms of the neighborhood outreach, there is one letter in the file. The applicant also did discuss the project with the closest to butter on the garage side, who had no objections. I don't have something in writing, but I can certainly file that email tomorrow. I, it was, it was shown to me tonight, if the board feels it's necessary. But otherwise, we'd ask you to approve the special permit. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Start with you, Scott.
No, the garage certainly needs a little bit of TLC, so I don't have any comments. Good project.
No, I agree. It looks great.
Too bad you weren't a little higher up and get a view of Il Pond.
Yeah.
It's not going to, I'm in support of the project. If you wouldn't mind filing it at the closest. My only concern was the closest neighbor with a nonconformity. I will accept your representation, but if you have an email, I would, I wouldn't mind if that was to be included in the file that they're on.
Happy to do that, yeah.
Mark?
No, I, were you dragging the boats down there by hand?
Sure, yeah. You got to come to the boat. Sure, yeah. Say your name for the record.
George Honeywell, 3 Quisett Ave. So, the next house downhill, they let us use their driveway. And I don't know if you can tell from the pictures, but the hedge stopped short of the lawn at the end. So, we go down their driveway and then come into the, kind of, it's why the building's twisted a little, we come in from the other side.
Sail or power?
Sail. Harshoff 12 and a half. And there's an old sunfish that my son dragged.
Knock about would be kind of tough to get down that hill and back up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Frank, any questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Jerry?
All set.
I should mention, and not to upset the apple cart, but in fairness to the board, there was a referral from the water department where the water department recommended an upgrade to the water service to a one-inch line. So, I had responded to that to say, we're not increasing water service. There's no water service proposed for the garage or the sunroom. So, it didn't seem fair to me that the applicant would have to upgrade the water service. So, I asked for confirmation if that was a requirement or a regulation. And the response that should be in your file is that it is not, but they just like to see it, or it's a recommendation. So, I just wanted to point that out in fairness to the board, that you had that information, but we would ask that that not be imposed as a condition because there is no additional water service going in here to this building. And...
And it seems to me to be a hardship to require people to upgrade water service for a building that isn't using water.
What's the size of the existing service?
Five eighths.
Five eighths?
Five eighths, I'm sure.
Five eighths.
Do you have a question?
Is there water running to the building now?
No, no. And there's none proposed, so.
No, so no cooking facilities either.
As I say, I don't, didn't mean to upset the apple cart, but I just thought you should have all that information.
Any follow up questions? Public comment? Seeing none. Board discussion?
Good project, I think.
Have no issue? Mark?
Certainly in need of a little upgrade. I'm not adverse to it. There's no water and no cooking facilities. Fine by me.
Frank?
I'm satisfied.
Is everyone okay with keeping the existing water service?
Yes.
One point, I think some of the things, as things go through, I think the water department's trying to improve water service for fire protection and a number of other things. I'm not a voting member, but I guess you should consider whether, could quote pro is the wrong word here.
I don't disagree, and I think it is important that, you know, when you're coming to expand use, that it's not unrealistic or unfair to ask for an upgrade to the existing standards, given that there's no increase in use. No, I agree with your point, though, very much so, Jerry. Especially if you're spending the money to put an addition on, trenching in a new water pipe is not exorbitant, it's not exactly cheap, but it's not going to break the bank. I don't have a problem keeping it in place. I would just suggest we put a condition on that there'd be no additional, anything that would trigger additional water use without an upgrade. So. I just, and I'll make sure for the record, we're clear that we're not going to start just blanket giving exemptions to a referral from the water department for upgrade. So I'll make it very clear. For the practitioners in the room. We're not finding precedent. So, how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Peter Stiles, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote. And is there a motion? A motion to approve? Is there a second? Findings?
Need some help. Zone District RC, flood zone AE13. This is a 240-10.1(c)(3). Lot coverage by structure is 12.92. 16,000. 45 square feet.
Existing non-conformity as the side yard setback, the non-conformity is being reduced. The applicant wishes to demolish, raise and reconstruct an existing garage. Photos were submitted, the garage is in a state of disrepair, so that the property would be improved. Seek to add additional screen porch on the second floor. Existing five eighths water main service, the board is not requiring an update, upgrade as there will be no increase in use. One letter of support. Lot is, yep, two people in favor, lot is sufficient for what's proposed. Anything else, a little cheat sheet?
No.
Any other findings? Conditions?
The letter slash email from the butter, we're looking for that. Per plans. Typical work hours.
You wanted the water.
Yeah, no additional, just a condition that, you know, no additional use or expansion without a water upgrade.
I don't have anything else.
Any other conditions on the right?
I don't think we have to condition it on getting the letter from the butter. The decision just won't be released until we have it.
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't need a condition on that. I just, it was an informal request. I'm satisfied with the representation of the attorney. I would just, it's always nice to have in the file. I want to, this is a finding testimony was that the closest to butter indicated that there would be support and that that would be submitted at a later date. Don't need the condition, so strike the condition if that's all right. Anything else?
I'd just like to point out that if they do have any problem with the water volume, a one inch main will considerably increase the pressure and volume. I mean, two bathrooms going at once or whatever, it would provide an improvement, but it's entirely up to you.
Anything else? Conditions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have hearing 26-23, Drukus slash Hogan, 16 Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures.
They've applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-11, 3a4, formerly 240-69e of the Code of Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 16 Falmouth Heights Road, Massachusetts. Okay, planning has no comment. Health, the property is on town sewer, no issues with the health department. Engineering has multiple pieces, I guess, that we can get to as we review the file. Is this water? The driveway is within a flood zone, so Concomma will need the permit for that, for that activity. And Concomma has some conditions. The driveway work is permitted. The property is connected to the municipal sewer. Four bedrooms. And the water service currently meets the town of Falmouth standards.
Any correspondence?
Is that somewhere else in here? Okay, there was one note in the file. I don't know what the note is.
Watch sheet comparison, I see, that was submitted.
Correct.
For the applicant, good evening.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, I am before you this time representing Brian Drukus and Kristen Hogan, the owners of 16 Falmouth Heights Road. Mr. Drukus is here with us this evening. They're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling at the site. 16 Falmouth Heights Road is located at the northern end of Heights Road. It's at the corner of Russell, near the, not too far from the intersection with 28. It is a dense residential neighborhood, near to the business district. The lot here is just shy of 8,000 square feet, 7,957 square feet, which is pretty typical for the area. Zone residentially C. And a portion of the lot is within the AE flood zone. The driveway, however, the dwelling itself is not in the flood zone. Presently, there's a four bedroom, single family dwelling with a total footprint of 1,327 square feet. The existing dwelling is non-conforming to, I'm sorry, it's not non-conforming, existing dwelling is conforming to both lot coverage and setback requirements. The applicant's purchased this in 2021, and they spent some time assessing the property, determining their needs. The home, as I'm sure you saw, needs significant repair, both cosmetically and structurally, and they've determined the best course of action is to actually raise and rebuild the dwelling. The proposed dwelling is attractive in design. I think it's relatively modest, and it is in character with the neighborhood. It reduces the clutter on the lot, eliminates the existing shed, includes a usable garage, and maintains the same number of bedrooms. This project is on the Little Pond Sewer District, has four, will remain at four. And it conforms to all setback requirements. Proposed ridge height is 23 feet 11 and a half inches, and the lot coverage by structure is proposed at 24.3 percent. Due to that lot coverage, requires a special permit. In the residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20 percent may be granted under special permit 240-11.3a4, formerly 240-69e. The board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal inhabitants. Here, there's no meaningful impact of the views and vistas from public ways. If anything, I think it represents an improvement. As it's improving, it's an improving, improvement to a tired property. Though it will be larger than at present, it is a dense clustered neighborhood, and it will be in line with nearby properties. There should be no real impact on shadow. The ridge of the proposed addition is only 23 feet, which is well below the 35 feet allowed. There's no impact on nitrogen. There's no change, there's no change in number of bedrooms. As to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, it is a varied neighborhood, containing homes of all sorts of sizes. The dwelling, both existing and as proposed, remains in line with the neighborhood and while achieving the applicant's goals and needs. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at 24 nearby properties. Analysis shows the dwelling as proposed is firmly in the range of those properties and certainly not an outlier. We did submit a front yard designation, signed by Gary Street from the building department, which determined that Falmouth Heights Road is the primary front yard. And we've also submitted a few revised site plans, which were done in order to respond to comments of engineering. This project as proposed represents an improvement for the owners and revitalizes what I think is a pretty prominent and visible corner. And it's by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would balance the benefits, and this meets the requirements of 240-11.3a4 and 240-12.1e. Given these reasons, I believe this board can and should grant the special permit, but I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions, start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
All set? Mark?
Nah, I don't have much. It is pushing the limits of the average around. There's like 19 percent. Certainly an improvement.
Celtics can't, so we should go home.
Nobody in the neighborhood would complain to get rid of that place.
I've heard all my neighbors jump up and down about getting rid of it.
I've worked on how.
They should have written letters of support, Brian.
Anything else?
No, other than that, it's ugly.
Be careful, I used that word once when the presentation. I thought we were going to get beaten up in the parking lot.
I thought, I thought the guy was going to take a swing at me. I was like, oh, the house needs a little work. What'd you say about my house?
Project well needed, nice, nice, nice upgrade to the, to the site, so.
My first law office was at 13 Falmouth Heights Road, so when I saw the address, I was like, oh, I know this house, yes. I have no questions, I think it'll be, looks like a very nice project. Public comment? Seeing none. Any discussion on the project? I'll make a motion to close. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, we are closed. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with second. Findings?
Okay. I think I can do a little better on this one. Located within RC District, located within Little Pond Coastal Overlay. It's AE13 flood zone, not the structure. Lot size, 7,957 square feet. Proposed ridge height, I believe, a little tough to see, 23, 11 and a half inches. Lot coverage by structures is increasing from 16.6 percent to 24.3 percent. Parking and paving is going from 27.9 to 36.1. Received the approval from Concomma for the driveway. No previous special permits. Lot cover, lot coverage comparison worksheet was submitted. Setbacks will confirm, conform. Shed will be removed. Proposed storm water management plan. There's going to remain to have four bedrooms, and it meets the criteria of 240-11, 3a4, and 240-12.1e.
I believe, did we cover existing four bedroom, remaining four bedrooms and on municipal sewer?
Yeah.
Sorry if I missed that. Any other findings? Conditions?
Per the plans, no additional structures without prior, prior ZBA approval. Construction per typical hours. Keep vehicles on site. Comply with the engineering comments, comply with wastewater comments. Maintain the trees on the shared lot line. No increase in bedroom count.
Going back to the vehicles on site, only because it's tight in the heights, I would suggest, if possible, to stay off Falmouth Heights Road without, unless they can work something out with the police. It's only because it's at the end, right by the other side, yeah. So either use Russell Road or come up with a traffic plan.
Yeah, there's, there's a pretty substantial setback to the, to the front yard, so they should be okay.
They start getting loads of lumber and other things in there, or large utility dumpsters and get tight, so just work with the police department to come up with a.
I think, I think we're able to manage, but if we can't, we certainly will.
Good in the landscape, but anyway, aren't you?
Yeah, no additional. Yep, absolutely. No additional lot coverage without modification of the special permit, inclusive of additional sheds or other structures. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, that's a vote. Thank you, Mr. Clower, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate your time.
Last hearing this evening, we have number 27-23, license or is it license? License, all right. 282 Edgewater Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to replace the second story deck.
Okay, applied to the zoning board of appeals for.
We just have to read, read in the hearing.
Special permit to sections 240-10.2a, formerly 240-3c of the Code of Falmouth, to replace the second story deck on subject property known as 282 Edgewater Drive, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. For health, there was no issues. For engineering? Just, they had just the one for the application was reviewed for impacts of public ways, and that Edgewater Drive East is a public way. And for Concomma, Conservation Commission approved the above referenced project on August 24, 2022, through a negative determination under a quest for determination of applicability. And assessors, I believe, no comment. And a letter of support?
One letter of support?
That's it?
Good evening, sir, go ahead.
My name's Carl License, 282 Edgewater Drive East. And just a little background on what's going on. We bought the house from my wife's parents' estate back in November of 2020. When we moved in, the sunroom, the roof was leaking really, really badly. So we had to contract somebody to come and fix that right away, and the only way to fix that was to remove the deck that was above the sunroom, so that they could completely reseal and get rid of the mold underneath that. And then after that, we started the process of, of getting the okay to rebuild the deck. And while that was going through, it was noticed that over 20 years ago, my in-laws had had a deck installed at the ground level because of uneven and, you know, they were elderly and they needed, you know, a easier way to get in and out of the house in the back. So they had a deck built, but none of that was on record. But it was, it was over 20 years ago, just about 20 years ago, that they had that built. And during the process of getting the permit, it was noticed that that, the deck itself was not counted in the lot coverage. So I, after talking with Gary Street, he had said that the only way that he could move forward was to get exemption on the amount of lot coverage that the. on the amount of lot coverage that the existing deck covers in the backyard. As far as the deck itself that we want to replace, it's actually smaller than the one that was there previously. There were stairs that extended past the side of the house and went down, and we have removed those. That was, as the deck came down, those had to come down. The plan is not to replace the stairs. The only access to that deck would be from the second story. We've kind of been in a predicament with that because that leaves a door that just opens up to nothing right now, so it's a little dangerous with kids around. So we've been trying to get this moved along. And that's really, we had one survey done and were instructed that if we could reduce the amount of coverage of the existing deck, that that might bring us within the alignment, and it didn't, but it brought us under 30%. We are at, we are at 30, we are 33.5 in the lot coverage, including that deck in the back. According to Gary, this seems to be one of the smaller lots in Seacoast Shore. It's roughly, I think it's 6,500 square feet lot. So that really, the house itself almost bumps up against the 20% limit as well. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, obviously, we understand why you needed to redo the second-floor deck with having a leak in your sunroom. As you say, when we were over, or at least for myself, looking at it, yeah, you kind of have that doorway to nowhere, so probably close that off completely. I guess I'm a little confused about some of the deck changes on the, that are at ground level. So I guess I'll wait to hear some of the additional comments. But as far as, as the replacement of, of the deck that's over the sunroom, that obviously makes plenty of sense to me.
My lot coverage is a little different than yours, I think, on this plan that I have.
Yep.
It says, my eyes are so bad, 33.5 existing now, just structures.
Correct.
And then with everything, it's 38.3?
39.3.
39.3.
Yeah, that's, including parking and paving.
Yeah. I thought you said different, that's all, I just wanted to correct it. Thank you, that's all I got.
Mark?
You're actually reducing the coverage by how much? You're not gonna replace the stairs that were there, is that correct?
No, the stairs are not being replaced. We, we're just gonna take it to the end of the house, and the only access will be from the second-floor door.
So how much is that reduction?
I'm not really sure, the square footage.
And then it's, it's tough to calculate the steps, too. Yeah, it is an overall reduction, and, and I, I feel for you. I mean, I know, I know what you had to go through, and I think with the reduction, and it's not substantial, but it's, it's, it's a fair amount. I don't have any problem with this.
Frank?
So you're asking then for a special permit for the lot coverage?
Yes.
Okay, and it's 39.3% if I can read this, which is pretty difficult to read.
No, 30, 33 point.
Well, no, that's by structure. We're talking about total lot structure.
Parking and.
Okay. Well, I don't have any, I agree that the project is necessary. I understand your situation. I was just clarifying what we're doing here.
Jerry?
No questions.
Public comment? Richard, anything?
We're past our 9:30, do we need a motion?
We do, actually. Motion to continue for 15 minutes?
Second.
Second.
Aye. Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right, we'll continue for 15 more minutes. Thank you for catching that. I have no questions. I think I agree it's a necessary project and it's bringing the building into compliance with the zoning by law, by granting a special permit, grandfathering a pre-existing nonconforming situation. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
So second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's a vote. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Findings?
There they are.
Thank you.
Looking beautiful.
Property located within RC zoning district, within the Waco Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District. It's on a public road. The lot is 6,500 square feet. Lot coverage by structures is 33.5%. Total is 39.3%. And we believe that there'll be a small reduction. Let's see, no letters in the file of opposition. Received Concom approval. No previous special permits. We're not, the project is nonconforming to the front setback at 22.1 inches. Side setback, side setback to the east is 9.7 feet. And a setback through the NGVD contour line. So sheds are nonconforming at 2.6 feet and 2.7 feet. Meets the criteria of 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E.
Letters of support.
No letters.
No opposition at the hearing?
No, right, yeah.
Any other findings?
No, but the motion was to approve. And from my notes, the only thing that says here is to replace the deck on the second floor. He's actually asking for more than that.
He is, and I don't, I was just actually going to ask in terms of the notice, what was, was in terms of lot coverage? It's pre-existing nonconforming, he's not expanding.
Actually reducing it.
Reducing it, which he doesn't need a permit to do. I don't, I'm questioning whether the building inspector.
Why don't we just approve the lot coverage as is?
Yeah, that's. We'll condition that.
Yeah, okay.
So conditions?
Per the plans, no additional structures, comply with the Concom approval, construction hours.
In terms of materials, either off-road, vehicles off-road, or work with the police and fire department to make sure there's no road obstruction. Edgewater Drive East is one of the major North Seattle thoroughfares. Anything else? Are you reading? Any conditions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, votes, thank you for your patience this evening. Thank you, thank you. That concludes our new hearings under open meeting. Board minutes from April 13, 2023. Any comments?
Yeah, there was one part where it said the motion for the draft was made by, draft decision was made by Jerry, it was actually made by Frank.
Did you call which particular case?
On the.
Blue Moon.
Whatever you call it. Blue Moon, whatever. I wasn't sure myself after that.
Sometimes, just for the board's knowledge, sometimes we have some difficulty determining, not usually who made a motion, but maybe who seconded, because sometimes there's two people at once.
Right.
So.
I'll start, the chair will start making sure you identify to be.
Usually you do.
But I wasn't part of that hearing.
That's true.
That's true, no.
I threw out all parliamentary procedures.
Other than the, that correction, is there anything else that needs to be, any corrections or additions to the minutes of April 13?
Actually, in the, it was said TTE, it was actually the ITE, I believe, for the, for the traffic study.
Yes, you're right, ITE, yeah.
Two corrections, all right, good catches. Anything else? With those corrections in mind, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Suzanne, second to Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. More discussion? Do we have anything we need to discuss at this late hour?
Can I just make a comment about something? I, we, you weren't here, Mr. Chairman, but we denied a special permit for 11 Surrey Lane, where they wanted to put a log business. I happened to be out there the other day. There was so much smoke coming from that property and fires going, and it's like an industrial complex out there. So I know that former boards used to get frustrated that nobody paid attention to their decisions, but I just thought I'd point out, I wasn't out there looking, looking for the guy. I happened to be out there for something else, but I was shocked.
Suggests perhaps an email to the fire chief and zoning enforcement officer to let him know what's.
I know what's going on out there.
Possibly going on out there.
He is using a hose from the house. Remember I asked that, he's using a hose from the house.
Well, no, but this was a fire going.
I mean, that's what I mean, I'm more concerned because.
But it was, I think it was like he's making charcoal or something.
Oh, God.
Any other board discussion? Board updates? Anyone? Future agenda items?
Well, we do have one change. We have one board member who is going off of the zoning by law working group.
Ah, thank you.
I signed up.
Graciously.
Good for you.
Graciously.
Because it's Zoom. Do you need a vote to authorize that or just by general consensus and enough?
Just advise.
I think you appointed.
Unless you want to vote me out, that's cool. That's cool, too.
We want you to do more.
It's a good learning. You know, with the changes tonight, we could have a new clerk and perhaps a new chairman, chairwoman, excuse me.
Ursus.
The clerk failed miserably against.
No, you did fine.
You were fine.
You did fine.
You sent me the first letter, I was pinching it for Mr. Dugan. Good one. All right, having no future agenda items, our next meeting is May 4th. Is that six? Six, not 6:30. 6:00 PM, we'll begin with an executive session here at Sound Hall. We are adjourned.